How we're bound.
Come to have me join the chat.
An entire reach on TV.
It's kind of harmful for the surface.
I understand what.
Vice chair.
He's not.
Wait for that. I think once it's all.
You made your way used to.
Oh, the poor. Few start, Sharon.
There was me one second last I turned things on.
No, that's good. No Tom.
No John.
No John, no Keith.
Do you get your agenda back?
Eventually.
The lunch has never arrived. When you got on that.
Probably got quarantined.
Go on.
That's normal. I got five, didn't get my jet there in it.
You didn't have a bender in it?
No, it's pretty gender off.
I've got my delay, but I'm not.
That's very strange.
That's only got it today.
There's obviously a real delay in place going now. Because Rachel, you went, you got yours last, did you get it Friday? That's the day, yeah.
And that was going to Portishead, so obviously travelling distance gets there quicker than.
Right, right.
Good job you'd all had it by email then, so at least you had the chance to look through stuff up through this link.
I'm sorry, I went to.
I know.
I understand.
I'm going to admit the members of the public then, while the people who are there, bear with me a minute. Ready to go out?
Right. Good evening, everybody. In the absence of the chairman, I've been volunteered to take the meeting this evening. So, welcome to everybody, both here in person and on Zoom. The emergency evacuation procedures, I think everybody in the room knows what they are, so I won't waste time on that. Can I tell you that the filming or recording of the meeting, which in line with the openness of local government bodies regulations 2014, may well be filmed or recorded by the town council, by other members of the council or by members of the public. We now move to the agenda proper, if I may put it that way. And the first thing is submissions from the public. Have we any, Sharon?
I haven't. I don't know whether any of the public who are in attendance. I know the Scouts representatives are here to, in respect of a specific item.
Right.
And Paul is also here in respect of a specific item.
Right.
So it's just whether the other member of the public has anything.
Is that Sarah? Or do you know how we're getting on with our stone cough?
No, I was thinking remembrance, but I'm sure that's going to come up.
Right, thank you. Applications for dispensation by councils.
No.
Item three, which I've dumped ahead of item two, which is apologies for absence.
I have apologies from Keith and Tony will hopefully join the meeting at some stage because he's in a car that broke down on the motorway.
All right, thank you very much. Declarations under the Local Government Act in 1972, does anybody have any?
Absolutely. Mine were emailed to.
Yes, you have, yes. Franklin sent some through today, so I will get back.
Congratulations Franklin on your appointment at the Cabinet of South Gloucestershire.
Thank you, thank you, vice chair.
We are good.
He's VIP now.
VIP?
Yeah.
Wasn't he before? Right, I have no announcements. I don't know if Sharon knows of anything that.
No.
Chairman was planning to say that I can't.
No.
Right, can we move on to item six then, confirm the next of the previous meeting? Get us through it, please.
He's proposing.
First, second, please.
I second.
Yeah. Sorry, who's that?
Franklin.
Oh, Franklin, right. Thank you very much, Franklin. That's that one after I.
Will you take a vote, please, councillors?
Cherry's got a sum up.
Tom?
Yeah.
Yeah. Hey, that's unanimous, thank you. Right, could you please initial every page and sign the date of last page, please? Thank you very much.
Sharon's already doing this because she's hoping as if I ever become famous, she can sell my autograph.
Who else waiting to join this, like, John Ash earlier on, said he was a.
John said he was a.
Yeah, I text him just in case he's money late.
Last time I saw anything this long, it had war and peace on the spine.
Sharon, can you hear me? Yes, I can. Okay, just still checking. Okay, so if there are any bells and whistles among you. I did just send you the draft planning agenda. Yeah, I saw that, thank you. I'll respond. Margaret, thank you.
I'm also doing the notes from the strategic planning meeting.
That was consultant was on the back of the agenda, the back of the minutes.
Right. Did you share it with me? Right, seven, two, one, ladies court activity centre.
No, seven point one.
Seven point one, sorry. I didn't see that already. Right, has anyone got any comments on the strategic planning meeting, which I just initialed and signed off because I thought it was an annex to the main minutes?
No, it's the, that's the, yeah, so it's the next stage state park development. Seven point one, there isn't anything in there.
Oh, that's all right.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Question, Graham, I wonder if you could explain what equipping the interior of the retainers consists of, what sort of equipment? Could you go a little bit? Well, when we had the initial build, it's, we already had insulation, we had flooring, we had lighting, we had heating. There's a ceiling, you know, etc. So what we're doing now is dividing it into three distinct spaces. One will be like a kitchen, so it's a kitchen area. One is like a project living area, so we can do bike maintenance, scooter maintenance, art projects. And the other one is a recreation area. So that's basically the three components.
So there was the, the.
The kitchen.
Kitchen area, yeah, and then what was the second one?
Various curriculum stuff related to help you to.
Yeah.
Food prep and making sweet peas and.
And then a workroom.
A project area.
Project area.
That's for bike maintenance.
Yeah.
scooter maintenance and art projects.
And the chill out.
And sort of chill out area. So basically, it's one big space at the moment.
And that's going to cost £10,000, don't you think?
Well, we need to get detailed votes on that, yeah.
And that's the maximum budget, isn't it?
That's the maximum budget. Anyone on Zoom got any queries or much? I don't see any hands going up. I'll take that as no. I don't see any hands going up. Sharon, would it help the people, members of the public who have come, if we dealt with the items they are particularly interested in now, bring them up the agenda, because I expect many of them probably won't want to sit for half an hour or more.
I think, yeah, you could, you could do the, although I was going to suggest seven point five, which is the installation of the permanent pickleball court, is actually combined in with eight point one, because eight point one does have the.
Right.
Some quotes, a part of the pickleball line markings, part of that, so it's.
Is anybody actually talking on that?
Paul is here in respect of that, yes, Paul, hopefully, so.
Paul, do you want to, I was the first with just the quidditch, so I'm sorry about that. How do you think you want to tell us?
I think that we're particularly keen to be able to play pickleball on what currently the tennis courts, it wouldn't stop them being used for tennis. But especially with the restrictions for playing indoors, it would be particularly helpful. And it's a facility, although pickleball can be played by people of any age. At the moment in Bradley Stoke, it's particularly being used for many sort of elderly citizens, sort of 55 plus is the majority. So we would be really keen if it was possible to have the line marking done. At the moment, we're using one court that we've managed to tape ourselves, but the tape isn't going to withstand the element, so it's already pulling off. So we're just looking to see if we could have that permanently done on the courts.
Was there actual recommendation on the papers we've been given? We do have a quote. Are we happy to accept that comment?
That's what I'm saying, I would, it would be better if you combined it with eight point one, when you get to that one. Because that has quotes within the. Oh, that one there. So it would make more sense to consider it as part of that, which is within.
You're going forward seven to four, seven three two, because I think by most.
Yes, you got.
Okay, we'll do that when we finish this one, okay. All right, so we've got a number of quotes here on eight point one.
Yeah, come on, if you want, uh. It's her, um, so.
Wake up in the background, Del.
Okay, I'm having to find the paperwork, yeah.
I just told you.
Yes, this is something that was visited, it's revisiting a decision because I actually didn't have all the information at hand at our finance meeting. And a decision was made, but all the information wasn't actually there for you to make that decision on, on the accurate data. So the report on eight point one, I won't read through it, I'm sure you've all read through it, has the accurate quotation for three companies. From Rachel's side, she included the budget, then Jubilee Centre Hard Court repainting reservicing budget reserve. There was also a comment that was made about netball not being able to be played on the Muga area, but one of these quotations, I'm just trying to find it, sorry, I'm sifting through it here.
One on the top of the second page.
Yeah, I've also had confirmation that you can play netball on a Muga if it has the correct surface. The correct surface is included in the quotation from soft surface, sport and play surface. It's the Macadam sport surface, and this was checked with England netball.
Right.
And the, I think the GP, GP Sport and Leisure, that's also a Macadam surface, isn't it? Macadam, yeah.
Named after a famous Scotsman. There are one or two apart from Robbie Burns.
But John's now, Tom Ash's.
Sorry.
John Ash is just, he's just.
Welcome, John.
Hi, John.
Don't think he's actually clicked in yet, but he is.
All right, let's see this. He's connecting that one. Evening, John. Evening, John.
Evening, sir.
That's all right. Nice to see you as always. We're dealing with eight point one and seven point one, no, and. Eight point one, one point one together.
No, seven point.
Seven point five, sorry, seven point five. Too many numbers around here. It's like a bingo calling session. So, Del, are you recommending any one of these in particular?
Well, I think you'd be minded to go with the two Macadam surfaces that suggest that you can actually play netball on them.
Makes sense.
Yeah, because obviously the netball hires are in weekly. I have worked for Jubilee Sport and Leisure and Sports For Wales Services, and both are very reputable companies. And also soft surface, sport and play surfaces, but I was just trying to be, yeah.
But there's no mention in the soft surface thing about netball. Talks about tennis and pickleball.
Yeah, that should be included in that.
No, it does talk, does refer to the porous Macadam surface.
Yeah, no, it does, but it wasn't got the netball, okay.
So are you minded to suggest anyone opposed to either of the other two?
I personally would be happy with either more, I'd favor one over the other. But obviously, the inclusion, they were all asked for specifics on the specification, i.e. to include the costing for tennis marking, pickleball marking, and also for netball marking.
GP Sport and Leisure is over a thousand pounds cheaper than the next one, is that good value for money?
In the past, I've used them, they are extremely good for remedial repair work and play areas. They have, they tend to do that more so than the redevelopment of whole play areas. And that's the focus for that business.
Well, shall I move that we accept GP Sport and Leisure's offer?
Does that mean? Netball be played on Macadam?
Sorry, did.
Does it belong to certain?
No, 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 because it says Macadam surface.
The Muga is always.
Yeah, the Muga was, was looking forward when we looked at the.
Red head coming somewhere, I think.
Yeah, well, it was just getting clarification with regard to a Muga surface. This, this, this isn't actually binding that, so no, it is, that would, yeah, it would be fine. The GP Sport and Leisure.
All right, if I move GP Sport and Leisure, can I have that seconded, or does anyone want to make another proposal? That's fine. Thank you, thank you.
You seconded, sorry.
I was worried about that new ball poem, but there'd been a deathly passion to close that night, so I might want to do that. Right, can we now move on?
Sorry, can you just take a vote on that?
Oh, sorry.
Rachel, Rachel, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, within that vote, can we just have it from the budget as well? And the budget information is at the end of the report.
Yeah.
With the budget reserve, specifically for the Jubilee Centre Hard Courts, we've got eight and a half thousand. But also, so we could take that and spend balance from the Jubilee Centre Ground Maintenance Budget, which they called it.
That's just over £400 extra. We can afford that, can't we?
Yeah.
Just checking. Right, with Rachel's comments on that, can I put that to the vote then? Where's the paper? Everybody in the room. Do you think you could propose that? Oh, my, you see, John, I can see.
Thanks, everyone.
All right.
Thank you very much, councillors.
Thank you.
So that means then you obviously, you don't need to reconsider that, the installation of the permanent pickleball marking, because that's included within the costings of this.
Right, Paul happy with that?
So, excuse me, the, the, what we were asking for is the marking on the two existing hard tennis courts.
Yes, that's what the, the quote is, that, so the, the company that they've gone with, GB Sport and Leisure, is lines to two pickleball courts, yeah.
Yeah. The last actual thing on that part of the report.
So when, when they resurface and then remark, they will put pickleball courts on to two of the tennis courts.
All right, that's great. How we used to play Gaddensden, a court that had markings for about four different sports matches.
Yeah.
It can be quite interesting. All right, does that take us on to seven two one?
I think the suggestion was.
Seven one one.
No, the suggestion was to go to seven point three two now, because there are two representatives from Scout Association.
That's fine. Yes, please do.
Related to the Scout storage problem, I've raised this in every meeting, the hyperpent. But we don't seem to be able to look forward on this. It was over six months ago, South Gloucestershire took their decision, and we're running out of time, so we need to take positive action. Now, Tony did a very rough calculation based on the area and costs involved with it. And he came up with a raw brush figure of about 80k maximum. Okay? Now, I would suggest we could use code 3089, which is future budget reserve. It says the plan for future measures after forward plan. Now, the budget is around 2021, so 95k. And for 2122, 166k, and this will be more than that. I'd like to propose that we re-acquire, matting budget, the 80k for this, the Scout storage problem. And I do agree with you.
The figures on the papers talk about 96k even for the smallest one, which I assume is perhaps slightly more reliable than something that the chairman's found in the back of his cigarette packet.
The report, seven point three point two, Roger.
All right, okay.
Yeah, what code number did you say?
It's code. Three oh nine, future budget reserve. Because they have all four twos.
What time?
Three oh nine.
All right, if you look in the pilot stuff, which is first budget draft.
On the battlefield.
It was fine, okay. It should all be together in the paper, so. Does that help?
No, it's been just.
It helps to relocate it in the pilot stuff, I guess.
Basically, they will five year forward plan and what will be coming out at each year end. Because it does eventually go back to something.
Yeah, does go back to something, yeah.
Isn't that, isn't that reserved, we have all four, they rule in forward plans.
Sharon, will this be an appropriate use of that money?
I, that's a finance thing, Rachel would be able to advise on that one, I think.
I think this is completely a council decision, because we use that, that budget, as Ben said, to fund the five year forward plan. So, you know, this is a council decision.
One two one.
And so we know what the year end surplus is at the end of this year and what, um, um, tax basis, we're not going to know our full funding from next year, so. If a decision, if council choose to do this, basically, it's going to mean that we're going to hit a funding problem further down in the future, but, you know, it's a council decision.
You only spend it once, don't we?
Yeah.
But we, historically, you know, at the same time, we do tend to have a year end surplus a lot higher than our decisions, because we are so strict with budget, so. We were talking with Clyde earlier, sort of Sharon and I and Del actually, and we did say that possibly a decision for spending this amount of money might need to be put held back a bit until we know what our finances are at the end of the year, but it's a council decision.
Would it be financially prudent to allocate it for this purpose?
It's not my decision.
No, it's your advice.
Financially, no.
I think Anne's got to be signed up there.
Sorry, one or two hands up, I gave it had as well, and Tom did. Tom, do you want to come in first?
I'm here, I'm here, I'm here.
Tom, will we not originally look at funding this from a works loan rather than taking it from our reserves?
Well, that would be the alternative. If we, if we want to feel we can fund it from 285,000 reserve.
I, I kind of think that with all the uncertainties around us at the moment, and, you know, what's going to happen next year, to take this amount of money from our reserve is, is probably not a good idea, whereas we can fund it using a works loan. The other works loan ends very shortly, so we're not immediately committed to anything.
Right, is the general feeling then that we should go with a works loan?
In all depth, so part of the, so honestly, part of the, a public works loan, which is referred to there. About the public consultation, so you have to get, you have to demonstrate that this, that this is something which the community of Bradley Stoke would obviously want, as like a back up to applying for loan. And we have done consultations in the past, so.
Yeah, they've taken for ages. I mean, I'm getting tired, aren't they? I mean, South Gloucestershire made their decision, so they can't have their container more than a year. And we're already six months into that, so they're going to be faced with no storage at the end of the year, aren't they? So, you know, we can sit here bravaric till the gas is low, but, you know, let's, let's actually do something for once.
One. Oh, Rachel.
I was saying, Sam, you look at the path for peeling within council, you know, I keep reiterating that it is a council decision. If, if it's funded, it is approved, then if it is backed up by, on the end of funding, that it would be funded at some time in the future from a public works loan. But, you know, that's more sensible to call it funded to fund. But, but again, it's bound to a public application.
Ben, do you want to come on?
I was just going, I was going to ask, when we started mentioning the work flag, to mention the condition that Sharon's done that, so. That's fine, oh, that's all.
Does anybody want me to come in? I haven't called.
Yeah, um.
Tom, sorry.
Yeah, I understand that it was a previous last.
On the loose, Paul, yeah.
Yes, you're very safe, Tom.
Is that already clear?
That's, that's.
That's better. If you talk closer to the microphone, I think that would be better.
Okay, I was also part of that, but I had to monitor by having known whether it would be accurate to spend that much money on a project at this stage, okay, for, for storage. But because it's a public money, well, even if it's a loss, we need to pay back on the public money. It's a public money we have to handle. And so we need to be very prudent and very, very careful about it. So I can understand this situation, it was a small amount of money, it's not an expense. But it's, when you look into it, one is 96k and the other one I could see is 150k. So whether we need to spend that much money at this stage in the pandemic, which is an important thing. That's it. I'm, I'm ready for my submission, okay.
So what are you saying there, Tom?
You shouldn't do it, is that what you're saying?
At this moment in time, I don't know whether it would be accurate to just spend that much money. Uh, because when you can actually, well, I can understand the logic.
It seems to me there are possibly two questions to be asked. One, in principle, do we do it? And bearing in mind the question that Roger's raised about South Costa having a time limit on the money, whether we work towards a public, um, works loan?
That's my consultation, that's, you know. Any consultation.
Sorry.
His hand up there.
Sorry, John or Tom?
John.
John?
He's got his hand up.
Hello, hello team, I, um, I don't really understand where we are on the, all these phases, because it seems to me that while we've got some estimated figures, we haven't actually done anything, have we?
I think that was Roger's point.
I mean, if we, if we, phase, uh, phase one, designing survey drawings, invitation to take a detailed, measured survey. Is that not been done, is it?
Right, okay, from my perspective, this project has not been agreed, there's been no budget set for this within this year. So from my perspective, I've been asked to go away and get some sort of four part figure on storage facilities that are more permanent. And the only one with lockdown, I have managed to get some sort of four part figure from was, as in the third chapter, uh, third paragraph, um, you should be looking at, for, for example's sake, I've been up to Brookway and I've measured an area that I think would be suitable if you were to have permanent storage. So I'm doing a lot of presuming from that, and the figure that this architect has put forward, which is twelve hundred to fifteen hundred pounds square metre. The figure is there for phase one, phase two, phase three. We have not got to the stage of design where we would come up with a block plan to show you and say, would you agree to, for example's sake, option one, two, three? There's no budget there at the moment, so I'm just coming back to you with what I can work with, which is a four part figure.
Okay, but can I, I, I think Roger here has got a point that we've talked a lot about this and nothing has really happened. I mean, how, how can we get this going? Because consultation, I mean, we'll have about six people with Clive, it'll take two months. But can we, can we get this going? What is the next stage? Should we get the design done or what is it?
Well, I mean, should, sorry to interrupt you, John, but it should be a very, very first stage, be deciding whether we actually want to support going ahead with providing and permanent storage for scouts.
I think you're absolutely right, Terry. I think that's the first thing we should actually agree or disagree on. I'd like to put that to the vote on the principle. So, Ben?
Uh, Rachel.
Where's Mark?
Are there alternative budgets that money could be taken from this project? So instead of just going into one budget, is the option now to kind of look across the entire set of budgets or portfolio budgets?
The only, the only one, the only one that immediately springs to mind is the all sites refurbishment budget. Where we've got a hundred and five thousand in there, I mean, this is a long term one. Um, that's fairly faded, we won't go to touch it because, um, we probably need it for the way we're taught with. I think that the report's coming out a bit later on, that that's not necessarily now needed. Now, if that's the case, you know, that, that would be a, a good idea to possibly use if that's what council wants to do. And, and as it's a youth provision as well, um, you know, if, if it is for that, um, possibly looking at external funding.
Is some of that money earmarked elsewhere though?
No, the, the, what the, uh, the future refurbishment reserve is actually called, because we've got three large sites. If one of the roofs went or something, it, it's that the major expenditures that, that the normal day to day, um, uh, budgets can't cover, so things like the roof. Um, so, but it can, you know, it's at council's discretion, over a period of time, we would have to sort of pay it back. Uh, to try and get a reserve back up, I mean, it would be a brief, uh, before we, uh.
He, sorry, like, could you just perhaps invite one of the representatives from scouts to, to.
Can I ask John first and then ask one of the scouts' reps? John? Put your hand up.
No.
No? Right, who's there from the scouts?
So you've got Clive and Nick from the scouts.
Right, would either Clive or Nick from the scouts like to go into this stage? I can see Clive, I'm not sure I can see Nick.
Yeah, exactly.
He's next to.
Oh, yes, I'm John, I'm, oh, yes, scout, some big letters, yeah.
Uh, evening everybody, I, I just have a quick word, um, just to clarify, I'm the Brumner Scout District Commissioner, so I have a wider responsibility with scouting in the area, which covers twenty one groups, so it's not one just for each scout group. Having said that, um, the group scout leader, which was me, up until late in twenty nineteen, still hasn't been replaced, so I search, I I currently remain in position as group scout leader and support them accordingly. I don't tend to get involved in the week in, day to day, uh, stuff to do during COVID moments. Um, but I do support Nick, who is the group chair, so that is why Nick is here for me to speak as well. I will just, um, I would like to think that most people, um, in the meeting do understand what scouts are about, and if it does, I have no reservations in playing my own trumpet. Um, the largest youth organisation in the world and in Europe, um, in the UK, half a million members, hundred fifty seven thousand other volunteers. Um, and all volunteers are hasty to it. Luckily, uh, First Bradley Stoke delivers scouting to around two fifty young people, uh, supports about sixty other volunteers. And bear this in mind, there's still a hundred and thirty young people on the wake in this, in this current times, even with, um, COVID's, uh, couple causes or problems with us. Um, like everybody else, we face changing times and temporarily we are going to lose both young people and adults. But rest assured, the demand will bounce back, we will need to continue to develop. Um, and it is just a blip at the time, we're, we're now twelve year of, of, of growth as a movement, let alone lately. Um, in September, along with certain other youth organisations, uh, by the government, down to National Youth Agency, we were became a custom essential youth service, and therefore we come to the same brackets in terms of essential need and funding accordingly in the music. Um, with regards to the onsite storage, all we can really do is reinforce the need for it, we often come out with decisions for you and the funding, that's down to you. What I will say, we'd absolutely be, um, welcome and appreciate the opportunity to do this, and we're not looking to gift offers in amounts. Um, what I would say is, you know, and clearly sitting here now is, is the first step, that we do want to be involved in the, the, uh, as you said, the design brief stage. My background, I'm an architectural technologist, so I do understand Estella's report, agreed upon the work, which is what she's talking about. Um, but we're not quite there. What I will say is the, the square meters figures are about right. What I would say is if the building envelope, just the bare shell, was provided with you, me, we would support you, if not actually drive in some of the local modeling and perhaps fit it out to the cost and some decoration, native services and things like that, perhaps do after the things, we would be a lot easier to get to that stage. Um, if this doesn't happen, um, some of you might be familiar with the planning process we have to go through again. Bear in mind, we, we triggered that, it wasn't enforced, and we do recognise it was a temporary position for that container, and it's triggered, um, sorry, not triggered, we, the container's falling apart, you know, the equipment's inside, it's getting damaged. And this is equipment that is dealt with and needed on a week in, week in out basis, it's absolutely essential. And crucially, if that's not there, that, that means volunteers have to go to some alternative storage, we have down at French Lane. And that adds time, probably half an hour on a volunteer's time. And it is hard work enough to get the volunteers to do one hour a week, let alone have another half an hour to do that, even if they're willing to do so. But the storage isn't there, it will kill, certainly volunteer recruitment, it will restrict the program we deliver. And ultimately, you will be detrimental to the different program, which is what we're all about. So I hope that gives some reinforcement to what we're really talking about. Um, I, I already have some visual suggestions, which as a winner required, we can throw into the mix and, and have heard meetings, you know, with Dumb and T, whoever it might be. Um, as I said, we're not going to get close to the math, but we would like to be involved, so we make sure that if something does go ahead, it's fit for purpose. It helps serve us, and crucially, it helps to manage that radio and it helps to itself in terms of maintenance and storage on site. So I've zipped through that. Nick, if you'd like to add anything to that, we'll free now, thank you.
Nick?
Uh, dearly, I tell, I, I endorse all of that, uh, I'm spending time despite the fact that we're closed and we are not meeting, uh, face to face at the moment. Uh, going into the container with a variety of, um, uh, volunteers on a rotational basis to empty buckets that are filling up as we speak. Um, the, the container is damp, um, uh, so we can't store anything, uh, that's sensitive. Uh, the other thing to point out and, and, and just to reflect on, one of the reasons that we were refused planning permission was it was considered unsightly um, from the, the curb side, uh, sorry, from the pathway. Uh, when our container is removed, there are then two containers that we are hiding. And, and I do wonder then, and, and it's just, the, the irony might be that then it, it might play havoc with the two that are already there, so thinking a little long term, you might find yourself, even if this particular course of action is followed, uh, that you might have to return to it at a later date.
I think we, I think we need to take this, uh, step by step, there's been quite a wide ranging discussion. I think the first decision we need to take is the one in principle about whether we wish work to go ahead. Perhaps I can ask for votes on that one. Um, someone like to propose that we go ahead?
So it was the principle of providing a shared storage space for B S T C and the scouts, because obviously we would have storage capacity in there as well.
So Reg has proposed.
Uh, just.
Uh, Andy second?
No, no, just a quick question I wanted to ask. Surely we should, before we decide whether we're going to proceed, we should decide how we're going to fund it, so that we know if we're voting for a project, whether it's going to be funded from our budget or funded from the works loan.
But that's a bit like chicken and egg, isn't it really? Because.
Yeah.
I'd love to decide. This, this, the principle of it, wasn't it?
Yeah, this is the principle. Rachel?
Uh, all I can say is if that's a, a chicken block, then, um, I think that suggestion, rather than using the, the forward budget, but using the, um, sites refurbishment reserve, uh, would be a really good idea. That will give, so that, that will not delay, uh, if council wants to proceed with this project. Um, we could, so we can cover the costs of, of the project, um, and we'll, within that period, we'll, when they are, you know, top of year end to purpose. We might even be able to sort of cover half the build. You know, we don't know because we're so, um, and if not, we could have, um, uh, um, a public work loan at that point.
Hey, John? John? John?
You're muted.
Muted, John.
You're muted, John.
Uh, hey, I've got it sussed now. Well, can I just say I second the motion? And I think we need to move along, and even if nothing happens in the end, at least we're starting the process, otherwise we just sit here in chat for months and months of doing nothing.
Absolutely. So can I put that to the vote then? Roger's proposed and John has seconded. Terry is in favour, I see.
This is just, uh.
So this is the principle of providing a shared storage space for the scouts and the council.
Franklin's got his hand up. And so has Fab.
Ed is four.
And Ben behind me.
Seven, I think, so that's seven in favour.
Those against, I see lots of your hands haven't gone up. And abstentions? Andy?
Tom, someone's up. One against?
Anyone against? Sorry, was there one against?
No.
Right, sorry, so that's seven in favour. Let me just, can I just count? So just want to make sure I've got the numbers right, so. One, two, three. Nine, ten, so it was seven in favour, and how many extensions?
Two.
So, unless there's someone who hasn't voted?
Sorry, can we get that start again?
Am I wrong on the numbers, people? Let me just, sorry, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, so it's ten altogether, yes, okay, so.
So are you right or not?
No, I'm not.
Right, can we just repeat that again, because we haven't got the numbers right yet. Those in favour?
One, two, three, yeah.
Three in the room.
Four.
Franklin four, John five.
Seven, so it's eight in favour.
All right.
Yeah, so it's eight in favour, and then that was two extensions, is that Tom?
And Andy.
Can you repeat your extensions again?
Yeah. Tom and Andy.
Yeah, so thank you very much, sorry about that, just sorry I did it.
Did you get it right?
Yeah.
Right, so that's the agreement in principle. Now, the next thing I think we've got to do is what we actually do next.
I would go along with Rachel's suggestion, but don't we take it from?
Rachel, would you like to repeat your suggestion?
Um, so we initially take, um, have a view to the project, uh, from the, um, from the, uh, site refurbishment project. Um, by the time that we actually physically need to sort of, uh, spend the bulk load of the, the money, uh, we'll know our year end reserves at that point. Um, and that will determine whether we can cover it, or whether we need to go for a public works loan, but whichever way, but, um, that reserve will cover the total build.
Now, moving hand in hand and us at the same speed, or we should move on to phase one and design and survey drawings? Or Del, perhaps you can guide us, or whether we should wait on that one?
I think initially we have to liaise, obviously, we do need to liaise with the Highlands as well, because obviously this is a facility that they've been using for a long time, just from experience. Um, I've found that discussing what their needs are, what they have at the moment, and what we need to do like for life, and then doing a basic block plan, it is just additional storage, so it would be an addition to what you have at the back, um, it would also be something that the town council would benefit from. Um, but obviously, um, I will be guided by architects. At the moment, until the budget's set, there's not really much I can bring back to the table at this point.
Should you at least talk to the people who would like to use it and come back to us the next meeting on that point?
Yeah, I mean, I was really important because that instills confidence within the, the users of the group, so I don't want them to think that they're being let out and, and things that we're doing without them, you know, knowing what out.
Ben?
I was going to say, so. What is, uh, the initial budget for us?
Okay.
Suggested from that?
Very same, no.
We could hope, we could hope, so, suggest what will be your budget and use that from the all sites refurbishment budget? And then we could, I don't know, round back April for council or after the year end, reassess how we continue funding it?
Current, what was it, please? Rachel's nodding, I think Del nodded as well, I don't know, she's falling asleep.
I, I didn't get, to be honest, I didn't get most of what we said then, but I got the gist, so, uh, we, we're using the reserve, uh, it won't be the first time that, um, we've done this, so we're using that reserve until we know what our year end figures are, and then a firm funding action plan will be put in place at that point.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wasn't going to say the reserve, the all sites refurbishment budget.
Yeah.
That should be, yeah. Yeah, I would, yeah, absolutely.
Can you just, sorry, before we just do that, what, what nominal code was that one, Rachel?
I knew you were, but. Uh, 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 three O one two.
Three O one two, thank you.
At the moment, we've got a hundred and five in there, and I think we're filling it up a hundred and ten.
Yeah.
As it, it helps look pretty poor.
I don't know.
Terry, your light came on. Was that an accident or do you want to come in?
No, it's just, I've got a message on my phone and just a kind of noise, um, I don't know, I may as well just get out of it, speaking. Sorry.
Okay, can I just make a suggestion?
Yeah, probably.
Yes, please do.
Um, picking up on what Del said, if, if we can work together as just one of the users and come on with, um, needs and wants. Um, I can draft some thoughts, which you can then say to whoever, whichever activity you want to commission, uh, get some process. And just take it up to the design feasibility stage and that.
That would be a very helpful guide.
And that way, your expenditure is going to be probably between seven and a half to ten thousand, including a cost feasibility study by quantity survey. And then you'll have something to work with and take it to the next stage.
That's excellent suggestion. If I can ask you to liaise with Del on that one, I'd be very grateful.
So you had a proposer from Ben and then a seconder from Roger.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we take, uh, a hundred thousand from the.
So that, so they, well, that's what, it's a hundred and five in there, so it's.
Yeah, so we just say a hundred, a hundred thousand.
Can't be said, yeah.
But yes. I mean, there'd be work, you know, it's a kind of refined requirements and things like that.
But it might come in cheaper, you know.
It might be just a little bit, yeah, sure.
It is a big smile from Rachel, I don't think I've ever seen a. It is a big smile from Rachel. I don't think I've ever seen a finance officer so happy giving away that.
Yeah. So, do you have a vote on that?
Those in favour then, please? Uh, Fab?
That's.
John?
Two, three, four. Eleven is five, six, seven.
And those against? You're against, Andy, or abstaining?
Against.
Against.
One against.
And abstentions? Ed?
Ed, are you in favour, against or abstaining? In favour. Or that's eight in favour, one against, one abstention. Thank you very much.
That is happening, that proposal about reevaluating where there's any problems.
So there is new sites refurbishment budget, uh, up to a hundred, well, a hundred thousand. And then by the time, by the time the year end figures are available, we'll have a better idea of finding.
So we can actually go on a public web stage.
And make the decisions, yeah.
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 Um, can I just say that it, those figures probably won't be available in April because we have to do a year end assessment. It comes in mid May.
Well, when they're.
At least we're, yeah, at least we are.
I think we made, we've made progress today anyway.
My point is we can progress in these actions.
Yes.
Or, uh.
Yes, the five year four part is still there.
Yes.
That's my answer. I'm happy with it.
Right. Well, no, it looks like we're right.
So now we are back to seven point two. Yes, seven point two.
Right.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity. I'll do. I already did my own now, I think.
Right. Thank you very much for coming, uh, drive and, uh, Neil.
Nick.
Nick, sorry. Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye. Right. Can we go to seven two point one? Um. The situation of the, uh, phase court, the rocks and ground area. Del, anything more to add to that? There's no recommendation here. And no reports from any of the companies?
No, no, it's been really difficult to get people coming in. I don't know if that's because they've got problems and issues with buying or if they're catching up work from lockdown.
So they're, they're supposed to defer it to the next meeting?
When I've got them both, maybe they're to work.
Okay, let's defer that one then.
Right, I think, uh, that's now, all right? See, oh, that is, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yes. Off and running call. Tony, do you want to take over the chair?
You did.
Yeah. Well, shall I carry on until he comes in?
Yeah, I'll carry on just until at least he's unmuted.
Right.
Yeah, carry on, Michael. You see, go in.
Uh, right, seven two two, the, uh, play area. Any progress on that, Del?
Uh, Harry has probably performed today and Nick will be going up on contract finder. So hopefully you'll note something. The, um, application form needed to be in for December for a January meeting to make a decision on, um, additional funding. So I can only bring it back if we get progress.
So this will come back in January or February then?
The, um, advert grant application was submitted today. That was, uh, up to 50,000 pounds towards the cost of the mayor replacement.
Okay, do we move on then? Seven two point three on the energy situation. Suggestions, Del? Which way we head on this?
Uh, well, this is something, as Rachel's, um, highlighted in the budget, there's a green resorted for all sites budget, which currently has 5,000 pounds in it. So these solar panels are coming in at 20 to 35,000 pounds per site. Um, it's not something that is budgeted for. The quotes are coming in. I've had, um, a fairly local company come in, um, it's, uh, et cetera. Uh, they become highly recommended, but obviously here are the quotes and you don't have the money in the budget, so.
We need to defer this until closer to the year end.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Happy with that? Defer it closer to the year end?
Can you vote on that?
Do you think on deferring that, please? Those in favour?
So that, sorry, Michael proposed. Roger, did you second? Yep.
John's up. Andy's up. Fab's up. Ed's up.
One.
Tom's up. Not Franklin's up, make it.
Three, four, five, six.
And the mayor is up.
Seven, eight, nine, ten. That, I didn't want to call for the, was air. There we go.
Tom's up.
I don't know. So that's deferred for next year.
So just when, yeah, so when I got the situation, it's financial.
So defer until after.
What's the financial year? Is it March, March meeting? Right. So we move on to seven thirty one, the youth funding budgets. Who wants to talk to that? Is that you, Rachel, or?
Um, I have a couple of things to, to add really. I mean, um, this is more in-depth rate plan, uh, linked to the current budget and the full plan that council.
Sorry, you're very faint to me, Rachel.
I can't hear from you either.
Yeah. You need more of it. Is that how?
Deep breath.
I don't see this. Um. I've just provided a report, um, giving more in-depth information for the breakdown of all the youth budgets because, um, it, it is, uh, uh, um, it's all inserted in different areas, sort of throughout the, uh, the full budget plan. So, uh, this shows, um, the forward plan budget for, um, sort of, for, um, for now and to next year and moving forward. And also the incoming expenditures, uh, to date, um, against the current budget, just, just to, uh, sort of make it a bit clearer. And attached to that, but, um, Graham had also, uh, provided, um, indicative projected, uh, youth project expenditures as well.
What do you want to share on the youth? You've got any, uh, comments on that?
No, I'm still working my way through it. I know Tony's got some further questions and he's got some other.
Yeah. Tony, do you want to take over the chair, Tony?
Now, you can crack on for a moment. Um, I just wanted to say something about this particular youth budget. Um, I asked Graham for some very straightforward questions, of which he sent through quite a dialogue of, um, rhetoric, um, of which I've replied to that. And I'm waiting for his response. So as far as these youth budgets are concerned, I think they need to be deferred at this moment in time until we get accurate answers from Graham.
I think Graham, Graham is in the meeting, so I think you, uh, you are in a position to answer those questions.
Uh, yes, I sent out, I think it was last Wednesday, um, an update report. It gave a brief overview of councils, particularly the new councillors, in terms of significant amount of external funding needs, uh, in, in recent years. It's, uh, it's now born in on, you know, it's over 200, 330,000 pound. Um, I updated re, the South Gloss youth activities offer funding. We're currently in the second year of 30K. I've actually seen hot off the press today, um, an email from the South Gloss council commissioning officer, who has said that in the, um, tendering spec for that 30K, there is also an extension of two years. Um, if the, if the spec is going to plan. Uh, and we, we report quarterly to South Gloss on that and we get positive feedback on our reports. Uh, and as far as the South Gloss commission officer is aware, although those budget titlists have been South Gloss, that is not an area that has been flagged at the moment as one that they are looking at. They should be able to confirm more when she meets, meets with the, uh, children in, the new children and young people's head, uh, I think, early next week. So that's the overall bit. In terms of the questions that Tony mentioned, I answered all his questions specifically in the update and I received late last night some additional clarification questions from Tony, uh, which I'm happy to try and clarify now, if that helps. Um, can we just interrupt there for a second?
Yes, please.
You just meant, the, sorry, you just mentioned there, Graham, for example, um, that the, this particular possible budget from South Gloss here is at this moment. But the problem is, we don't know what is going to happen. And like, like all the other aspects of what's happened so far from the bits of the meeting which I came in on, we're deferring things because we don't know what's going to happen until we get our budget through and can do it. So that's why I recommend that we defer this.
We defer it or do we notice?
The, the, the 10,000 pound Graham is talking about, that is guaranteed for, isn't it, three years?
We are trying to, um, we've got vacancies which we do need to fill so we can deliver the services we have contracted with South Gloss to deliver. Um, so, yeah, so, you know, we do need to go ahead and fill the vacancy as soon as possible so we can deliver those services. And I've spelled out quite clearly in the financial projection exactly what that delivery is in terms of where the services are delivered, how frequently they're delivered and the various delivery strands. So, um.
That's this document here on the indicator.
That would be three centre based sessions at the new building located at the skate park. That would be two detached streetwork sessions in a variety of locations. It would be the continuation of our extreme populist girls' youth project. And it would be the continuation of the jubilee sports session, which is located here. So it's seven sessions of delivery. Um, there seemed to be some confusion because I was asked how many staff we employed. Uh, and I've tried to spell out that that's actually quite tricky because it will depend on when you advertise youth work hosts. You may get people who apply for some sessions or all the sessions. Uh, and so it's the total hours that we are delivering, which is the key factor there. Because, for example, let's take a very simple example. You may have the detached sessions where you have two pairs with a pair of people going out twice a week. You may have people who only apply for one of those sessions. So potentially you could have four people delivering those two sessions. Whereas if you add the same two people applying to do the delivery of those sessions, you could have two people. So, uh, I've tried to sort of represent the most important thing is the amount of sessions we're delivering and the, uh, frequency with which we're delivering.
Thank you. Tony, don't come back.
That doesn't really answer the, sorry, yeah, it doesn't really answer the basic question. The basic question I asked, and I unfortunately can't have the email which I sent through last night, uh, in front of me right this second, but I'll, I'll dig it out, was for example, how many? And you keep saying it depends on this and it depends on that. I want to know how many youth workers are you looking or you're, you're wanting to have? And therefore, and how much, how many hours are they going to work in total? So that we can work out exactly what this budget is, because I don't think we know. That, that's in the response, Tony, that's in the. If I can just, if I can just finish, in this moment in time, all the conversations or emails that you've, you've come out with is, it depends on this and it depends on that. And I, it doesn't really answer the, the question of what is it specifically? I mean, that. The update report, in terms of what you just said, Tony, in the update report, it clearly states the total amount of hours that will be worked to deliver those sessions.
So perhaps it's worth councils focusing on the number of hours perhaps rather than the actual numbers and.
Right. Yes, I, I can see, I can see the logic of that. Um, how, uh, are you making that for a week or hours per month? How is it, uh?
It says, it said, that's the amount of hours, staff hours you would need to deliver those seven sessions. Good one then. How many hours, how many hours a week do you make per week? It says in the update report, so 51.75 hours per week. Ed, do you want to come in?
Yes, hello?
Yes, come in, Ed.
Okay, uh, let, let, let's take the step back. What Tony was saying, because I was confused and that's a difficult thing to do. Yeah. I would like, I would like to see this as permanent position, floating position, and then the expected hours for that. It's, it's confusing if you're saying I've got a number of hours and a floating pool of people. It does, it doesn't tell us very much. Yes, you've got a service delivery of a total number of hours. But I think it's key to know who are the permanent staff and who are the volunteers?
No. I can see the logic of that.
Sorry, in, in the update report, we're talking about delivering seven youth work sessions. So that's seven periods of time where you engage with young people through that youth work session. The three centre based sessions involve three members of staff on three occasions.
Yes, but is that the same member of staff? Because it's just a label. You're dodging the question.
That's the point. You don't know that until you go through the recruitment process. Ideally, in terms of the continued professional development of staff, in terms of staff retention, in terms of staff supervision, the ideal scenario would be you would have three members of staff delivering all of those three sessions, for example. But having been professional youth work for 40 years, I know that sadly you often can end up with, say, three people delivering one session and another three people delivering two sessions. Until you go through the recruitment process, you do not know.
All right. Well, let's, 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 let's be, let's be, uh, toxic tropic about it. It's not soft and it's not solid. So what your ideal position is, is you would like three permanent staff members, depending on the populace of application and pool. And then the others are purely volunteers as come along. And then you have a total delivery of the number of hours per line as you would go down along that assignment.
No, you, you have employed people to deliver the seven sessions. You've employed people to deliver the seven sessions.
I understand that. That's the concrete part. Concrete part, isn't it?
Okay, yeah. And then what volunteers, you would build around that with volunteers. Yes, obviously, yes.
Right. So you've got a, if, if it was ideal, you have a core and then if you've got extra people, you would have extra hours. Is that a correct understanding?
So in extra people.
If you have seven sessions and they're an hour each, you have seven hours. Let's keep the maths simple.
Okay.
However, if you wanted to extend that because you have a greater floating pool of people, would you have additional sessions?
If you have the money to, if you, if I externally fundraised as I have previously to deliver additional sessions, yes, that's why I talk about, uh, project funding, for example, because that's one of the things, at the moment, I'm about to put in an application to South Gloss for short term project funds. It's part of a sort of a budget that's come up out of the, uh, the pandemic and the fact we're deemed to be essential workers. So that might be, that might be to employ, uh, two people to deliver a short term project on, say, four sessions, but that would be separate to the contracted workers.
Okay, so I, I, I think to give Tony the answer, what have we got today that we deliver?
Well, we've got today that we deliver, but because we've got severe staff shortages, uh, it's limited, it's limited to the girls' project. It's limited to skate park, occasional sessions at the buildings at the skate park. It's limited. It's limited to, um, the sports session at the Jubilee and various ad hoc stuff. That's what it's limited to. I'm desperate to fill the post so we can up the amount of service delivery. At the moment, at the moment, South Gloss appreciate the problem. Um, we've been doing virtual sessions, we do the one-to-one. Well, for example, it's, would it be useful to give a little indication of yesterday, for example? Um, yesterday I started off by doing that Instagram post, um, to a close group of young people to promote our evening session, which is a face-to-face session under uh, national youth agency guidelines that read tear COVID combined. Um, I then, on my way to work, I had a phone call by a young man who was not in a very good mental health state. And I was literally sat in my car for forty-five minutes chatting to him on the phone. Uh, I was getting ready for, um, the evening session and I was coming out of Iceland at the Willa Brook. Uh, and I was called out by a seventeen-year-old young man with his mother and his small sister. And we talked about CVs, job applications, stuff that's going on for him for twenty minutes. And then we came here and we delivered a COVID-secure, face-to-face youth work session with a group of girls and young women. And that was, yeah, it's, that's why it's sometimes quite difficult. I think a lot of people have the notion that youth work is some, uh, the idea of a youth club delivered once a week during a fixed time. And, um, professional youth workers are a lot more flexible than that in terms of being totally rooted in a community and being available to offer that range and diversity of support to, to young people. I don't know if that helps or not.
Yeah, that's hard to unpaste it, uh. It's very noble of you, Graham.
No, it's my word, yeah.
Yeah, but who tasked you for all this? I don't think, I absolutely, we keep saying South Gloss should task people for all of this. But as far as I'm aware, they don't have any youth workers at all in South Gloss.
No, that's why there's fairly good security now of the youth offer money coming to the State Town Council. Because again, spelled out in the report, they want to fund town and parish councils and other organisations that show a clear commitment to a youth offer to young people. Therefore, by us having poor funding within the town council budget, it enables us to draw in significant external funding. And that is what we have been doing.
I mean, once the run of youth were insisted of detached work meetings, wherever they were, and sub-structured meetings, um, then we had the skate park plus all the residuals of that adult, plus the detainees and the sergiery class, knowing that short-term projects, residential, build project, youth mini bus hire and additional youth workers. I mean, where does this all come from? I mean, did I miss something? Was I asleep or something?
Yes, feeling the fire in the pan, Roger. But sometimes.
I think Rachel wants to come in and seeing she's joint author of this report, I think she may have something useful to tell us.
Uh, I was just sort of roaring up, um, the budgets that the council had, had agreed or are due to look at. What I would say, and, and it, this has been highlighted in the year this year, this is the max budget for the youth that council would, um, you know, are committing themselves to cover. Today, we've been nowhere near that. So any surplus, um, historically has been wind spent. So I don't think that has been wind spent for this year going forward. So that will go into the, um, uh, year-end surplus if it's done and spent. But what I want to highlight and to back up what Graham is saying, um, this, this budget is insufficient to cover all the costs. And, and, uh, uh, so the, all these, uh, things that are, um, are planned, um, with the youth provision, um, are also down to being externally funded. So councillors know where the upper limits of, of council funding is within the budget. That's what we choose to do.
Tony?
Yeah, you, you just, yeah, fine. You just mentioned there about, um, uh, because the money hasn't been spent, you, you're gonna re- ring, uh, FETN's here so that it could be.
No, it's not for this year.
It, it was historically because that's what council chose to do. So it's not this year.
Let, let's not talk about the small things because we wanna talk about what's gonna go on now and in the future. And I don't wanna know what's happened before because there's certain things I think has happened before which are bad practice. But okay, let, let's talk about this as something now and going forward. Um, I, I get confused when, Graham, you use terminology like, um, it's for the wider community. I'd like to know who that is. The additional work delivery, youth work delivery, the additional activities, what are they? What are the other events? And what is the short-term project? And finally, you talk about student patients. It, 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 to me, I just, um, find this particular terminology is, is, there's nothing specific in any of that, for one, but.
With respect, Tony, I just covered some of that, but I'm happy to go over again for you if it helps. Let's take the student patients first.
Why have we, let's, what's the wider community?
I think you're talking about a phrase where I talk about children, young people and the wider community in terms of.
Is the wider community? That's my question.
Can you let me answer the question please, Tony?
Yeah, sure.
Children, young people and the wider community use the skate park, okay? At first, we raised the money for the skate park thinking it was gonna be predominantly used by teenagers. But it is used by a wide spectrum age range. It's used by a lot of young children, it's used by primary-aged children, it's used by teenagers. And the term wider community means it's actually used by a lot of people in their twenties and thirties and even older on a regular basis. That's what I mean by wider community.
Okay. In the, in the future, can we actually put that down as not the wider community, but people of different ages or, or as you've just explained? Because the wider community is such a woolly term, it doesn't, it's really specifically mean anything. And, and I, sooner you used specifics rather than these type of phrases.
It can have an action.
Because we, we, we've got to deal with specifics, I mean, pensions and pensions. And, and I can't keep, I can't work with the terminologies that you're using.
I, I think we've had a good discussion on this.
Can I ask, Roger? Where I agree, if, um, unspent money against a budget is usually surrendered to general folks, not ring FETN's. Um, why are we doing that? Why did we do that?
Um.
What?
No, it, we're not doing it this year, but, uh, the prior year, that was a council decision to ring FETN's the youth money because, uh, the youth provision was still in development. And that was actually, um, approved formally at council meetings following the previous planning reform.
Okay, well.
Yeah, uh, so that, that was a council choice, um, which then built up the reserves to then, then, you know, um, we, uh, to then build up the youth provision.
And the build-up of the reserves was a, a major contributory factor was because we were extremely successful at drawing external funding. So the external funding was spent before the poor-funded, hence the rollover.
But generally, I mean, anywhere else you go, if you, if you don't spend your budget, you lose the money. That goes to general, then, then necessarily you have to make the case again, you know?
Yeah.
So we decide that as a council, like, and reverse.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's not happening this year. But that, that explains why the, the youth reserve budget had built up so much because councillors had decided to re-fence it for a couple of years.
Because we've been operating off external.
Yeah, and you've been, you've been, the money that we've actually been using to pay for staff is like through the South Gloss, ten thousand pound a year.
And the other bit, as, as Tony, the money keeps disappearing from one part to another one. Um, it's like, chase the lady, you know? Yeah.
Oh, but are you talking about the reserve money?
Yes, some of it disappears after, I mean, when it's spent, I think you put some, some of it in another apartment or something like that.
No, I mean, this, this is how our publicity council works. So we hold reserves, um, and then literally the reserves, and they're all in the three thousand page. Um, and then when, so, and generally that is reserved for a specific area of expenditure. And then the council formally, um, choose to spend something like, like you, you have just, um, um, possibly move the, with the, with the, uh, storage required. So we've got that money in the reserve.
Yeah.
Then, and, and then it's gonna go through, um, uh, formal meetings with council and you're going to decide, like, we like this first, we're going to go ahead with it and approve it. At that point, that money has been wind spent specifically for that expenditure. So when the invoice has actually come in, for it formally to be spent, of course, you spend, that money has to be moved out of reserve and it goes through the expenditure side of the account. Because you've spent that money, you can't just leave it in the reserves. So any money that actually moves out of reserves, it's, that council has approved to table.
Yeah, yeah, that's all right, yeah.
And the only difference one is, um, with the youth budget, and, and you highlighted this in your email, and, and sort of thank you for sort of, um, finding that true because it makes it easier for me to see areas that I need to explain a bit more. Um, so we've got an un- unallocated youth reserve that has been built up on the surplus funds that council chose to ring FETN's. Then as soon as you choose to allocate it for a specific project, um, it will be moved into an allocated reserve. So it, it's not just sitting there sort of willy-nilly. As soon as you approve the expenditure of that and we get the invoice in, it then has to come out of those reserves and go onto the expenditure side. Because o- otherwise, if you just leave it in reserve, it's gonna empty the money here. You're gonna be out of balance. Yeah.
Ed, do you want to come in? Yes, thank you. Thank you for the explanations from both of you. That's great. It helps. Um, on the, if you take the page and go to the very part, there's a little section here that's not explained. And it says, in addition, we have attracted significant, there's a word, significant in-kind and sponsorship support, which brackets to volunteer time and donations, i.e. food share, skate prizes, arts and sports resources, et cetera. How is that declared? If you're receiving donations, is, isn't there a, a requirement that, that, that we see what that is? Especially if it's money?
This is stuff that's regularly reported in my, my bi-monthly reports. If we talk about, uh, one of those aspects is corporate volunteering. Um, that happened a few years ago. Uh, that was a sort of a one-off, uh, event which generated a lot of infrastructure, additional free infrastructure stuff like picnic benches, the shrub benches and everything at the skate park. That was with a company I, I cannot mention, but you might have a good idea because of the risk assessment, it's actually the organisation. Uh, Fairshare, they, they had a lot of publicity recently. We signed up to them. Uh, council had previously, um, sent two letters of thanks to, uh, the local Tesco Express. They know, they may, um, to, it's actually stopped because of the pandemic, but for the past couple of years, we've received, um, loads of bakery products, a little bit of fruit and veg. And they have saved us having any costs for the delivery of certain youth work sessions. For example, smoothies or sessions, you know, sessions at the Jubilee or sessions at the skate park. Um, in terms of, uh, donations, they are usually, uh, for example, that usually happens around festival time. And that would be, um, in exchange for putting a skateboard company or scooter company's name on the publicity, they would donate some bits and pieces for, um, prizes or, for example, at the skate park, we have, uh, scooters that are free for hire, we have helmets that we loan to young people, um, et cetera, et cetera. Um, we got a huge donation from a company of sports equipment. They'd stopped operating and they just dropped off, I don't know, I should think it's over a thousand pounds worth of sports equipment. We get sent free scooters occasionally, which we use again at the skate park. Um, a local woman who, due to a, a disability, she used to be a jewellery maker and she just contacted me from seeing the work we did and she dropped off, you know, she literally was a jewellery maker at, at a market and she just dropped off loads of beads and stuff that we use for our work with young people. Again, saving phenomenals amount, amount of money in piece in our sort of craft and sports offers to young people.
Graham, thank you for those examples. I think that's probably almost as far as we can take this.
Yeah.
We've been talking about it for twenty minutes and I think all we really need to do is note this report and ask the officers to come back to either youth or finance in due course if necessary. Can I propose that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
So that was proposed by Michael and seconded, sorry, who seconded?
I don't know. There was two people seconding. One was Roger and there was one from the body of the hall.
Was it Tony?
I don't mind it. Those eggs got stung as well.
Oh, yeah.
What, what can we do in terms of these vacancies though?
Sorry, can we just take a vote on that and then perhaps councillors might have good ideas on the new vacancies?
Can we just agree on that one? Uh, Barry's happy, Tom's happy, John is happy, Fab is happy, Andy is, Andy is, Mary is, I think everybody is.
Very much.
You know, off to me.
Right, Graham, I don't know whether those not in the meeting heard, but Graham asked whether councillors have any suggestions as to how.
Any problems that we're now trying to recruit.
Trying to recruit. So.
Like, where do we normally go to recruit?
Uh, we have, we can sort of, we can use the South Gloss website, we can, uh, we, we use our newsletter in the past. We can talk to other partners we have in the South Gloss youth partnership.
Well, can I suggest we take all the steps that we've taken in the past and report back to a next meeting? On the progress we've made?
Is it okay if I try another round of recruiting just desperately?
Yeah.
That's what I was hoping for.
And then Graham will do the updates, he will send the leisure use.
Right, okay. Right, thank you. Let's move on from that one. And that takes us to seven point four?
Yep.
Seven point four. Well, seven point four?
Hi, yeah, um.
Bailey's Court?
Yeah, we had two quotes come in. One is for the entire roof's area. One is for a part of the area, the old part of the building at Bailey's Court. Um, but the problem that you had with the link is actually fixed, so the roof isn't really a problem.
So are you saying we, uh, we can just withdraw this item?
I think so.
Yes, agree, we withdraw it. Rachel, do you come in?
Uh, you spent the money or you buy a piece of the money.
I spent the money, yeah.
At the, at the, so at, at the moment, it, you, you've already, uh, looked for it.
I should warn you now, Rachel, that I work on the Mr. McCorda principle on money. Right, so that's that one then. So we move on then to the reports of committees.
Um, no, there is.
No, what's this one again?
Yeah, this seven point six.
Oh, yes, is there anything on that?
Uh, no, the, the only thing on that is I haven't had anything from the councillor who originally put the amendment in. So I'm staying here for now.
Hello, can I speak on this one? Hello, can I speak on this one?
Yes, where was, where was?
Hello, John, my daughter. This, this, this proposed amendment was put in by Elaine Hardwick several months ago. Uh, she's now, you doubt the. She's now moved out in Berkeley, and she's not here tonight, and I can't see the point of keeping it in here, can we just wipe it off, please?
Absolutely.
I think it's reasonable to take it off for now and then.
Yes, you always resubmit it if she's still interested.
Just remove.
Just wipe it off, please. Yeah.
Tom, you, Cherry, come in.
Yeah, I was just pointing out that Elaine, the one that was raising people not attending meetings, and she isn't here and hasn't been in several meetings in the last few months, so it seems a little bit ironic.
I did actually ask in one of the recent meetings when she was last seen.
She wasn't there, she won't come to town.
Right, then we move on to state finance.
We have to vote on that one, Chair, or we just wipe it off?
I'm happy to put it to the vote if it's so.
Yeah, I think you probably make such a...
I don't know, what's the procedure?
Yeah.
I'll second it, anyway, John.
Yeah, and Cherry's got her side.
Sorry, who proposed that?
Roger, I think. Don, Roger.
I'll second whoever.
Okay, thank you very much.
One, two, all agreed, Ed's agreed, I'm happy.
Franklin, yeah.
Ben's happy.
Hang on a minute, sorry, so, right, so can you vote again, just so I can count, please?
Mayor's vanished.
One, two, three, four.
Thank you.
Five, six, seven in favour. Sorry, eight in favour, against? Two against.
Fab and Andy, and the mayor's vanished.
Phil Handy was against, who's the other one?
Fab, and it was Fab and Andy, I think he's against.
Yeah, Fab and Andy.
That's a surprise, okay, thank you.
Red? Eight receive the minutes of finance, and then update on Jubilee Centre, one, we've taken it already in conjunction with seven point five, so we're now up to a review of current contracts. And that looks like you, Del. Del?
Yeah, hang on, sorry. Okay.
So I thought you'd gone for a coffee break?
No, no, none of that tonight. Yeah, no, it was recommended that we look into these three items, the high-rise maintenance contract expired within a month of restarting at Raby State Town Council, and I've heard a report, these quotations are what were presented to the heads of chairs back in, I think it was in March, and, yeah, obviously it was agreed that we continue using Ambiance.
Was it?
It's lovely to see you, Sharon.
Yes, it was, yeah, if you read the report, so there was a Covid nineteen action plan approval was given by the Chair of Council, which was Council Tom Adichu, the Vice Chair of Council, Council Tony Griffiths, the Chair of Finance Committee, which was Council John Ash, and the Chair of the Leisure Youth and Immunities Committee, Council Roger Avonin. Councillors agreed that the Ambiance Landscapes had submitted the best quote and always gave a good service, thereby representing best value of money for the residents of Frigga Stoke, and it was agreed to invite Ambiance to maintain their high-rise and grass verges for another three years.
High grass tree in the report.
Yeah. I thought there was a big objection to that.
I think one or two people were unhappy about the work Ambiance were doing or were not doing.
I think that was the problem, I mean, it does say, if you read that further down with the officer recommendation, that we acknowledge that it has been difficult. Yeah, and in actual fact, you do have in your agenda pack a small map, and we do have a much bigger map on the wall in the office, and actually, this map does show that Southgloss cut the majority of the open spaces, and ours are the heights, specific highway verges, but not all highway verges, because if you actually, although you can't see it on here, but I mean, in the office, you can look at the bigger map on the wall and whatnot. Like on, I think on Brookway, there is like a couple of the verges that we cut, but Southgloss cut the others, it's very, very bizarre.
Tis indeed, so, Cherry, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, this particular aspect of Ambiance and the contract for three years was a considerable time ago. Can anybody say how many times Ambiance have actually cut the grass this year? As I thought.
Yes, we will, because we get invoices when they start heading. It's, we have invoices from them, so finance would be able to tell when we're actually paying them for the stuffs during the year.
But my point is, you don't know whether they've cut it or not, you're just going on an invoice which has been submitted.
Yes.
Nobody, but nobody is checking whether they've actually cut it.
That's why we've put in there about the officer recommendation, which Del put, so that the current contractor sends an email to confirm where the works have been completed, and then we physically go out and check what they've done, and get them to come back to see whether there are any works that are missed.
Yeah.
And we acknowledge it has been difficult this year because of, well.
Because of what?
Covid can be blamed for everything, but it has been difficult, but we'll definitely be much better on the case next year. And if Ambiance are due, is because sometimes the residents will say, oh, this, you know, that bit of grass hasn't been cut, so when we can, they will then come into the office and identify where the grass, you know, where they live, so we can pinpoint it, and if it's Ambiance, we will always go back to them and say we've missed a bit, and they will then come out, because some, obviously, they have their regular contractors or their regular staff, but if a member of staff is on holiday, they might ask Southgloss to regularly, Southgloss miss emptying bins and that sort of thing, so.
Anyway, we've signed them up now, so it's a pay-up.
But we will definitely keep an eye on it over the forthcoming year.
I think that's just a thing to note for future action, isn't it?
Roger and Mike.
Michael.
We may have signed them up, but they're on a thirty-day notice, so they can go at any time.
It's thirty-day notice if the work, if they're not carrying out what they're supposed to do, but if we want to give them notice to quit in six months.
Sharon, Sharon, if I could please finish, what, I've actually gone round, and I've got a photocopy of your map on the wall, and I've gone round and looked at some of these areas, and there are some of these areas, they have not cut any edges at any time. And part of their contract is to litter pick, which they could do, cut the grass, and cut the edges, and they certainly don't cut the edges, you know, so, you know, they're not doing a good job, as you make out that they have, sorry.
I'm not, I wasn't saying that they don't, but I'm saying we might check them properly this year in some occasions.
I'm sure, Tony, if you notice any areas which are particularly in need of action, if you draw Sharon's attention to it, she will raise it with Ambiance.
Oh, I will, yeah, definitely going forward, and also Southgloss, because Southgloss carry out the core cut in March and October, so actually, if there is stuff which still hasn't been done, we need to chase Southgloss about that, because they've done the core cut at the end of the year. Ambiance are finished now until next spring, I suppose.
Can we just note this report, bearing in mind that the meeting's now passed?
Yeah.
We're just paying invoices, but nobody's checking it.
We will definitely, I promise we will, keep a close eye on it next year.
Right, but let's look forward rather than backward, and we're assured that, by Sharon, that we'll keep a close eye on it next year.
And also, you know, it counts, we're always in the office, it counts, as it, it's now that you've got, I know that map's not very good, but I mean, it's worth knowing in the area that you live in, specifically, you know, a couple of roads by you, what Ambiance cut, because then you can keep an eye on things as well, and if you say to us, you know, oh, hang on a minute, that verge seems to have been missed, we can take action and get that looked into.
It may be a good idea that the map that you have on the wall is either redrawn or photocopied and sent out to each councillor, so they know.
I know that, what's Del on? Oh, she's there, Del was, that is something, sorry, I couldn't see you, Del, I know that redrawing the map is something which you will keep, you're going to be looking into, isn't it, because you've done that in the parish you were in before, and actually, that would be really useful to have a smaller map, have it split up into smaller areas, definitely.
No, I've done, in my previous role, the maps were so old and so tiny, and I've obviously, I've done art, so just highlighting these areas and...
Really good, yeah.
If you do this map, the shape of the map is very difficult, so it's going to take me a good weekend to get that map traced it, and then hopefully I'll be able to mark out and identify what areas, what, for example, say, three grass verges along Brookway, heading towards structures that surround, so we've got the clarity and backup with the wording as well as the visuals, if that makes sense.
That would be very helpful.
Yeah, I think that would be really useful.
Councillors perhaps, once you've got the work done, send small maps of their immediate areas where they actually live, I mean, I'm very happy, because I believe in all to John.
Can I just make a point as well, I think it's not just this contract that we should be really following up on, making sure that what we're paying for, we're actually getting. I think we should be introducing in all of the things that we're, the services that we're, that we're paying for, that we follow up and actually, you know, determine that we are getting the service we're paying for, not just paying the invoice.
Here you go.
Yeah, quite right.
Great.
Yeah, we're not... How is that liable to be that way, though? That's not, well, I don't know whether it is, but I think perhaps it's just...
Any invoices associated with my work.
Yeah, you always, Brian always checks any invoices. Yeah, these must have been checked at some point, because you can have years of invoices being paid and not sure that you've received the goods for being paid for. No, I mean, obviously, we don't pay invoices if we're receiving an actual something, but I guess perhaps, yeah, I mean.
Services is harder than that, really.
Yeah, it is, yeah, but it's definitely something which we're more than keen to take on board and change ways of working.
Can we move on from that one then?
I think we've got to... Financial regulations to make sure it's actually codified somewhere. Again, councillor.
What do you mean?
So if you are receiving goods and services of something like grass cutting, that there is, there is a provision within signing off an invoice or paying that bill, that you are mandated to go check for it, so I wish I'd take your word for it, but that's something that should be in some kind of financial regulation.
Well, we're looking at...
Or financial.
Yeah.
Rachel's got it.
We're looking at financial rates and standing orders, aren't we, at December's finance, linked to the awarding of contracts, and that, then coming back to call council in January for further discussion and decision and changing, so if that isn't already in there, something like that would definitely be put in.
Rachel?
I was just going to say, I know that I've been out for a while, but that was always the case before, I think this year has been a different situation with these people paid it very long, because all I can say from the finance side of things, perhaps to put invoices back through, when I was in the office, there'd obviously be sort of dialogue, right, you know, have we had this service? That goes without saying, I don't think it needs to be in a financial regulation, because that should happen, but I think it's just, we've gone through a very, very unusual time at the moment, I would say.
Cherry?
Yeah, I know we're going to talk about this at a finance meeting with reference to our procedures for payment, but we have paid twenty-one thousand pounds upfront to a contractor before he's actually done one unit of work, and to be quite frank, that's absolutely ridiculous, and it's apparently been going on for years. So it's something that needs to stop.
Well, that, as she said...
Let's refer that to the finance meeting and the standard of payment, when that meeting is in December.
Rachel?
I think that was likely to pass at the last meeting, and we'll be going forward.
Yes, we don't need to, the people that we do pay upfront through here.
And I have to say, that was really relevant point that we could raise, I mean, and, you know, and that's what council is, you know, sort of there for as well.
Sharon made the point that we really need to look at the people who are paid upfront, and perhaps we could have a report back to finance on who those people are, and how we can go about making sure things happen properly.
Well, I think the two main ones that paid upfront, their contracts are both up for renewal anyway next April, May time, so they will...
Or we can afford to wait for April next year, and then perhaps draft a more severe contract.
Well, with the contract, it will need to be, when it goes out to quotes, that the, that everybody who quotes knows that their quote is like for, not, you don't get paid in June for the whole year, it spreads throughout the year, depending on that sort of thing, so, yeah.
Absolutely. Cherry? Cherry?
Yeah, I, 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 fire brimstone coming at me at this moment in time, absolutely outrageous, that we should be considering paying people upfront, the bloke could, or that company could go bust the following day, and you've lost twenty-one grand of constituencies' money. This is outrageous, we should never even be thinking about it.
No.
And we're doing it to two contractors, really, you know, the bloke could die tomorrow, God forbid.
Could be stage name.
Yeah.
Let's not take this line any further, the point's been made, contracts come up for renewal in the spring, and I think we need to make sure that when they're revamped, that they are done on state payments, in order of...
Yeah.
Can we move on from that?
Yes.
On to two, two. What's that for yourself, Roger? Eight, two, two, Del again?
Right, um, this was a review of the cleaning and consumables, so obviously, I've had to meet up with cleaning companies, I've only managed to meet up with one other man to pair with who currently have now. The specification that we have been working from is on the report, and then there's an additional specification that I tried to draft up to be a little bit more simple and a little bit more transparent. The hours that the second contractor proposed was forty-three point five hours, which isn't a huge increase in numbers of hours to the current contractor. Everything is within the report for the cleaning review that you asked for.
Are you advising that we stay with the existing provider?
That's not something that I'm sort of in a position, because we are actually in contract with them, I think we still have two years left to go, I mean, I was just asked to review, my opinion on this is something I'd rather not give at this point, because that's...
We note this and expect a further report in the appropriate time.
Yeah, I mean, we are in contract with the current contractor at the moment for, I think, another two years, up until 2022, so.
And the other thing which you did, Del, was a review of the cleaning consumables, didn't you? And that has been quite interesting, because there is vast difference in price, so we will definitely be changing our, it's on the back of the page, and the, yeah, on that particular consumable, it's the cheapest person is actually a local, local business partnership, so.
When one looks at liquid soap and sees it varies between five pound something and fourteen pound something, there's obviously a case to be answered.
Yeah, and it does build up, doesn't it, over the years, so.
May only be ten pounds a month, but that's... May only be ten pounds per month, but it's hundred and twenty pounds a year, isn't it?
Yeah.
Right, so note that one. Happy to hear that, everybody. Anyone to the contrary? All right. That is noted then. Keyholding services?
Yep, I've managed to meet up with one, two, two other companies. I haven't actually managed to speak to the company that we use at the moment. I have tried for the last three weeks left messages, but nobody's actually got back to me for them to submit a refreshed quote. I think it's something that does need to go towards the finance committee because I think this actually is something we need to.
Bearing in mind that the contract.
Dell, you've muted yourself without.
Oh, that's not bad thing. Uh, I do think it's something that needs to be discussed further because it is very difficult getting hold of the people that we've used. In lockdown, I was actually called in once by the company. And they couldn't tell me which of our premises was alarmed, what was going off. And when I spoke to the gentleman, he said, I said, well, when, when are you coming to attend? He said, I'm in Scotland.
Right, I I guess we've got one worry that we're not planning to look at this until next month and the contract was only a few weeks later.
That would be perfect timing because if you, oh, I suppose, when is that?
I think, I think at the end of, I think it's the end of January twenty twenty one, about six, seven.
I've just, well, I did. We get in the, the, the situation where we have no cover at all in this area.
It's amazing we get the call out, you're right, yeah.
We don't, we don't get covered, do we? With the contractors.
Finance seems very common for the, that they can handle it. Right, can we move on then from that one and take the officer's recommendation that it goes to finance next month? Or in fact, ever?
Sorry, you proposed that?
I did.
You seconded that?
Yeah.
They've voted on that one?
Uh, I've got Franklin, I've got John, I've got Ed, I've got Andy.
Yeah. Terry, I think, did you put the other one up? I think that was the nine in the span.
Terry?
Yeah.
Yes, thumbs up.
Thank you very much. That'd be December council then.
December finance.
Sorry, December. Apologies, December finance.
Right, planning, we've got two planning reports.
They're just to receive.
And move on from that one, we've received them. Leisure and youth. We've got the four towns and the.
That's all you've got, minutes?
Sorry, I'm ahead of myself. Trying to hear. Minutes of the planning and admiring, can miss his both of them.
Uh, just received.
Just received, okay. Sorry, doesn't have to receive them.
I think that's all right.
And then leisure youth, you just received this as well.
Right, then we received leisure and youth. And we move on to four towns who have given us the modern version of War and Peace.
Well, the, if you remember, for those councillors who are on leisure youth amenities, it came to leisure youth amenities in October. And we did ask for more clarification on various points before council decided whether to award them the service level agreement for this, for twenty twenty one, I'm just, no, but I'll just back. Um, unfortunately, there was nobody from Portons transport at the meeting for councillors to ask a question. So I made a further decision until November for council. So I emailed them on the twentieth of October, asking for, telling them it would be coming to this meeting. Um, and asking for the clarification on the two points that councillors wanted to know. I then sent a follow up email on the third of November, because I hadn't heard anything. Um, I then sent a follow up email on the thirteenth of November. Sending them the agenda for tonight's meeting and encouraging someone to come and to be able to ask the question to enable councillors to make the decision. I heard absolutely nothing.
And I suggested we defer this until they actually do take the trouble to turn up.
So it's going to stand by leisure youth?
Roger's second that.
Can we take that?
Favor. Terry's got Herander, Ed, Andy, Tony, Tom, Rod, and John, and Fab. I think that's unanimous.
Thank you very much. It might be worse actually communicating to them that we won't be even considering it until we get absolute custody guarantee that there will be arriving because we just think it's wasting our time. Yeah.
Or at least for my part.
I know, it's, you know, it's not, it's not that difficult. We just want to. Yeah, it was a very simple question.
Right, confirmation of the signing out of, signing out, signing off of the audit?
No, updates from South Gloucestershire ward members number eleven.
Oh, I'm sorry, I haven't got that.
Was it because they would be any updates that there are?
Right, Roger, any updates? Franklin, I'm told now you're the most important member on South Gloucestershire council. You should go first. And the others were very well in your wake.
I had, I had one on the, I think, bookway, path where, where we initially engaged with the relevant officers, how they could help us with, with that. And I think the last response came from Kosham to Sharon concerning the opportunity to come in to engage for us to see how we can move on. But I think there was one area within the email that I wasn't happy with that, that we haven't had any incidents, so within the priority. But I made them aware that we don't have to wait until accident or anything happened before they can action that. So hopefully, during their visit, they will consider that and take the relevant action.
Tony has a question for you, I think. Franklin?
I mean, I, I totally agree with what you said, Franklin, now with reference about there's no record of any accident, as in because possibly people have reported it. But, but, and I concur exactly with what you say there. And one thing which I picked up is that they were talking about having a Zoom meeting. I don't think a Zoom meeting is gonna meet what we want, is we want a site meeting.
Exactly, yeah.
As they were talking about, oh, well, we'll have a Zoom meeting, but that, that's no good. We need a site meeting to work out what we can and what we can't do.
It definitely needs to be a meeting because I, I personally didn't understand what the South Gloucester official was talking about, because he was talking about at the back of footways and it just.
Yeah.
I, it almost seemed like South Gloucester talking about a different area to where we think it is. So as Tony said, we definitely need a proper meeting.
Perhaps Sharon, you can go back and ask them for a meeting on site.
Because of lockdown at the moment, they're not, they won't be doing anything, but we will definitely push for a, a a physical meeting hopefully after the second of December.
Then have a look at their location before we do any meeting or whatsoever. So they need their physical presence will be required. So I'm in contact for them to action that for us.
Can I make a comment? Um, I, Franklin, I wrote to you and Sarah and regarding the intent for this meeting. And I know it's moved on since then, but I'm just wondering whether we could, Franklin, would you be able to communicate to the, to the resident that raised the initial query about, initial complaint about it? Because he has been in touch, sort of saying that he's not getting any communication back. And so I think it might be a good idea if you could just communicate to him. What's the current status?
I think the original complaint came by Steve.
Yeah, that's it, exactly, yeah. But he has also since then sort of complained that he's not getting any feedback.
So what South Gloucestershire, we normally communicate by Sharon. Considering the issue was first raised to, by the South Town Council before we escalated it to South Gloucestershire.
But it's gone round and round in circles. Sharon has actually communicated to Stephen that she's raised it with herself and Sarah. And Stephen has since then come back saying he hasn't heard anything from, from any councillors. But I've written to him and suggested that we have a meet theme. I've told him that that's what the, the intention is. Um, I didn't actually want, you know, obviously I wanted to understand exactly what was going to happen before I communicated back to him. But I'm just thinking it might take a little bit of heat out of it if you could communicate with him directly.
I will take that on board. The last response came from the officer on Monday, just last Monday. So yeah, so we update Steve on that and potential message from Kasham and Cashmore and the team.
Marvellous. And will you copy me on that, just so that he knows that, because he's aware that I've been trying to progress it as well. So if you copied me on that, please. Then at least you've squared the circle or whatever.
I'll do that, Derek. And another, another update is, yes, I received from Police and Crime Commissioner on road safety funds, which is available for community to apply for. I've just forwarded it to Sharon and others for them to see if we can use that funding for anything that we think will be helpful within our community.
A much funding?
Oh, most, it's grants up to five thousand pounds. Initiative for road safety.
The road safety.
Thank you.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, why the bookway?
Terry, carry on. Terry?
I was disagreeing that it's Sharon's point. If it can be used for road safety, could we try and get some money for something to do at that Brookway peak point?
If there's money available, perhaps I ought to look at doing some speed checks outside the Bailey's Court Centre, because if you go down there any time after about eight o'clock at night, the average traffic speed is about fifty five.
If, if we could apply, the deadline is the thirtieth of November, so please, you can take.
Hey, Roger and I don't want any speed checks in Barbie Stone, thank you very much.
Tony, bad drivers are objective. Right.
Roger.
Yeah, Roger.
Okay, right, quite a very, very controversial planning application. I asked for a site visit against all the rules. And we voted for it, which doesn't say Gloucestershire. But there's eight five houses in Stormbury, so it doesn't really affect us. Apart from the usual rule of licencing taxi drivers, there's nothing lovely about it.
Thank you. John?
Tony? Who's on that?
Oh, Terry, sorry.
Yeah, just a question. I noticed from one of the Facebook chat groups for North Bradley Stake. There's a gentleman um, doing Indian takeaways from his house. Now, apparently, he says he has a five star um.
Well, safe area.
Hygiene certificate. However.
Yeah, that's all right.
It doesn't necessarily mean that he's actually licensed.
Yeah.
And I was just wondering whether we could ask our licensing guy, I think it's Keith, possibly, whether or not this chap may have a license or not to actually operate.
He's solid, but he hasn't been on many of the panels, just like.
Or whoever, maybe.
I can, I can certainly ask South Gloucester licensing, but I will need an address to know.
Yeah.
Like a number or.
At this point in time, I've got the guy's name and phone number, but I could probably ask him what it, where he.
He could order a takeaway and then walk to the house and pick it up and then. Yeah, I can definitely look into that one.
Having had one of our restaurants absolutely hammered for their safety, I think we almost have a duty to make sure it's up to scratch.
I mean, you can have a hygiene, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's a license or a permit.
Absolutely. Right, John?
Sorry, John, over to you, John.
No, I'm gonna say it for me, thank you.
All right, thank you, John, very much. What would I like? Right, financial matters, twelve point one. Confirmation of the audit, I see we've got very well, ticks all over the place.
Yeah, wonderful.
From the.
Welcome, Rachel.
News that and pass our congratulations on to all the staff involved.
I, I actually like heard the shout out a big thank you to Terry that told that, our Terry, our contractor uh, that, that sort of filled in whilst I was away. We did work together on some of this together, but it, it, we couldn't have got it through without her, so that, you know.
If praise is being thrown out, Rachel, grab your shirt.
Hopefully, at, at the same time. As a consultancy for another couple of months until Rachel gets her Covid jab and is actually able to venture back out, so, yeah, she does an amazing job.
Right. Um.
Um, generally, we put the sign up on the website. And the council historically have given their response. But, but it's actually been the same wording for about five years, so I hope the last word is sign off working there. And it's just, I mean, you haven't got the different response, but would you like to?
I'm sure you can come up with some synonyms for some of the adjectives.
Well, I mean, would you like to go along with something along the lines of what?
Absolutely. I, I personally would.
What, he said, he said that one?
Well, this is, that was the one from last year, Rachel's saying, do you want to sort of reword it so it looks like, not like just being baseded from last year?
Do you want to give a response? Do you have a response?
Formally recorded, I'm just suggesting that.
Yeah, okay, yeah. I do, I do think we should get a response, Rachel.
What is that response?
No, it worked, no, just what's laid out there.
Yeah, that's all right. Well, just say if you perhaps.
No, it's on the top there, it's the bottom there, the council's response. So what's there is that is what was what you wrote last year.
I mean, you could swap over the words procedural or accounting in the third line and just put them in a different order. I, I think if you came up with something that's the occasional different word that's conveying the same sense, Rachel, we'd be very happy with that.
Is anyone really going to be sitting comparing last year's wording to this year's wording?
I'm sure Tony would if he were involved.
We are.
I would, I would. Okay, I, I, I'll change the wording around a bit, let's make it from the.
Right, investment review and strategy? Do, do, while we, sorry, do we actually want to move? Yeah, I thought it was an audit, shouldn't we? Do we accept the audit standoff, convey our thanks to all the staff involved? Roger's seconding that. Those in favor? Hands going up everywhere. Except John, who's gone off for a dog walking break. Right.
Sorry, so that was.
Tom's, Tom's just, everybody except, who's here except John, who's, who's not picked up.
So you proposed more to second this question, haven't you? Thank you.
Right. Right, investments review.
Right, um, so I'm going to introduce the investment strategy policy um, in April two thousand eighteen. Um, this came as a strong directed sort of link to audit matters. Um, and it needs to be reviewed annually. So basically, the bare bones of it is, be it the expected wording. And, and in the report, I highlighted in grey uh, the areas that sort of council need to actually agree because they're at their discretion. So um, going through it on the second page, the investment options. Um, it, it just explains what specific investments are. And then the council strategy, which is sort of halfway down the page. Um, so the wording that council have used for the last few years, and I think it's still valid. A fine frequent approach to council's investments, maintaining sufficient levels of security and liquidity. Back at State Council will use the following types of investments. Uh, banks, children's securities, local authorities, mother, public authorities. Um, and then further down, it's just a list of our current investments uh, within these sectors. So at the moment, we bank with Barclays Bank, we've got a main current account. Uh, we've a linked active paper account, we have a daily cash week. Um, to get the vast amount of interest that the bank's offering at the moment. Uh, we've got a Cambridge and County Bank, hundred and eighty-day notice business account. Uh, we have Cambridge and County's one point seven percent fixed rate one-year bond that is due to mature in January twenty-one. Uh, United Trust Bank, one point eight percent fixed rate one-year bond, maturing in December twenty. And uh, church charities, local authorities, otherwise known as CCLA, property fund. That is the long-term investment that we are.
If I come back one, Rachel, I'll ask how much money is tied up in the two above that, the two one-year bonds?
Um, yeah, we're coming on to that debt for the reinvestment. So um, for the one-year bond, um, at the moment, we've got seventy-eight thousand eight hundred forty-nine pound base loan. Uh, because where I, I would um, ha- have to leave the office in October last year. And it was the five to three and a half.
Well, I think, well, Rachel, how much are you going to do? Property fund? CCLA.
Thousand.
How much?
Sixty.
Sixty, oh right, okay. It's not, that one is fine, but that's in four years.
To be honest, I mean, it's still offering a good yield, but probably expensive to be at the value.
I expect the numbers are.
Uh, but the whole point of it is that it always points to a long-term investment. So um, so within the one-year bond, we basically, um, with the maturing interest, the Cambridge and County Bank uh, will mature with just over um, eighty thousand pounds. Um, and the United Trust Bank will be maturing uh, with about fifty-two and a half thousand. And as I said, Roger, we have sixty thousand in the CCLA. Uh, and we've got um, and just under seventy-nine thousand eight hundred in the Cambridge and County hundred and eighty-day notice uh, business account. That interest pays monthly and goes and is paid straight into our current account. So um, so coming back to the um, in the investment strategy, so that's a list of our investments. So um, within what's called non-specified investments, uh, that is not allowed, it does not meet the criteria to be treated as a specific investment. Such an investment has a greater risk potential. And examples of this are money markets, stocks and shares, um, and things along those lines. So council's current strategy um, is that we don't invest in high risks in this high-risk area. Uh, due to the unpredictability and exposure to loss. Uh, and based upon this, council will not use this type of investment.
Goes enough?
That'd be good.
Sorry?
He said shares are a good idea. Shares in Amazon are a good idea.
Yeah. So we'll have to employ a financial advisor together.
They got that best.
Two hundred percent.
And then to loans, this is um, loans that council um, offer to sort of local enterprises, local charities, things like that. Um, I'm just going to skim through that. Um, Bradley's, uh, council's strategy at the moment on that is Bradley's State Town Council has adopted a narrow approach to investments. Prioritising security and liquidity and loans and not being prudent with this strategy. In addition, if this type of investment is high-risk, it would require a robust debt recovery mechanism. Um, and then moving on liquidity and security strategy, um. So this is looking at how liquid we um, we are with our investments and giving um, a maximum investment period where um, the money is physically sort of tied into an investment and you can't get it out. And at the moment, Bradley's State Town Council has determined that there's a maximum investment period uh, for twelve months. And that is linked to us having uh, the one-year fixed rate bonds. Um, now, out of any, any of the um, um, the uh, strategies that council has at the moment, this one we might have to revisit. And that's purely going to be done to um, um, the decision that you'll make at the next stage, whether you want to invest in a one-year bond. And more importantly, whether any are available at the time that we would be looking to invest. So we might have to come back and revisit that one at some point. Um, and then going down below just to, you know, so that councillors have got a full history. Um, I'm not going to sort of read through it all, but we've got um, the strategy that was agreed um, in uh, the two thousand seventeen eighteen. Um, uh, eighteen nineteen, nineteen twenty. So the strategy that was agreed last year. Um, uh, council has discussed the position at the full council meeting on the eighteenth of September and agreed to maintain the current investment structure and not to increase the investment with the CCLA Local Authorities Property Fund as the current level it poses capital to a manageable width. And it would be improved to increase the total further in view of the current uncertainty within the property factor. So I mean, this is a council decision, I think, I mean, as I said, as I said, I think everything in here is still valid. But it's obviously up to council if he wants to change any of your investment strategies.
Anyone any comment on this, Ben?
I was going to say, in light of um, Covid and the hard year we've all had, and it's been quite difficult, and we've deferred lots of other decisions and things related to money and other committees. I would be wanting to propose that we maintain um, the current investment structure as is, with no changes in light of the current situation. And just update the dates as necessary and supplement to reflect that.
Roger?
Yeah, the, the rates that we get is now sort of boiling, and I suspect at the end of this one here, um, which is maturing on twenty-fourth of December, a year of trust plan. One point eight, you won't even get one point eight now. I mean, it's going to go down. And so is the Cambridge County Bank, great. I mean, they're all, you know, get one percent, you're lucky, I think. So you might as well leave it as it is.
I think we uh, we'll put it all on the top.
Do you want to?
No, I, I went, I went dog racing once and they all beat me.
I mean, at this process, it's going to all be revisited at any time, it's just the legal requirement for it to use that lease annually. So if things change um, sort of next year, um, or when the reinvestment periods come, uh, we can, we can just amend this at that stage.
Yeah. How about adding to the proposal, Rachel, if the market for any reason next year changes materially, to the point we want to bring it back to, I don't know, say finance initially? We can do that?
Yeah.
Next year?
I, I don't even think you need to put that in.
Okay, we'll just do this.
Yeah, man.
I, I, I think we have a proposal that we thank you for all the work that's gone into it, Rachel, by you and your colleagues. And we propose no change to the, I think that's what Roger and Ben have proposed. Ben wants to go back?
That's it, I'm back to back.
Those in favour? I thought he wanted to leave the room. Tony, John, Franklin?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to send yes. Are you trying to put?
Terry's lost her thumb.
That's a unanimous one, thank you.
We take you in favour, Terry?
Yes, absolutely.
Right, move on then to the lease agreement increases.
No, we've got investment.
Next one is the actual investment review, so that's twelve point two point one. We've just updated strategy, and now it's that one.
Right.
So that's basically what you're going to look at doing.
I thought we were going to be first of them, actually, I must admit.
Now that one's looking at what you'll do when the bonds fix, I think, this year.
So this is the actual, so what you've just agreed is the strategy, which is the framework upon which the, uh, the council can invest. Um, so um, I've already explained sort of the investments that we are holding, but I've also given some background to um, to the um, investment supplies that we have used. So Cambridge and County's Bank um, is very, very sort of well-racified within town and parish councils. They only deal with businesses, charities and councils, and they're really highly regarded. And um, I've seen as a safe port of course, especially at the moment. Um, so I've given all the sort of background information there. They've got, they're very, very liquid as well. Um, which is, you know, sort of a bonus at the moment. Um, so we, we covered some of it previously, so um, we've got the one-year fixed rate bond with them that's coming out in January, that's one point seven percent. And we've got the hundred and eighty-day notice business savings account as well. Uh, then the other um, provider that we're using is United Trust Bank. And again, and both of these um, providers offer a further standard rate of um, returns um, without sort of taking high, high risks. So United Trust Bank again is, is highly regarded. Um, and in fact, they've been awarded in two thousand and nineteen, the Development Lend of the Year at the Specialist Finance Introducers Award and Best Secure Loan Provider Money Facts Award. Um, they, they always appear in the um, uh, investment comparison sites and, and do, tend to offer really good returns. Um, at the moment, we've got a one point eight percent bond, as previously said, that's due to mature Christmas Eve, family member. So I'm not going to come in and reinvest on Christmas Day, I'm afraid. Um, and we've got sixty thousand with the CCLA that, so I'm giving all the background information there. Um, performance and yields um, since over the last year. So actually, the, the CCLA has maintained its, its yields. Um, but like I said, there have been some capital depreciation. But we're looking at this as a long-term investment in return for, um, in exchange for a good return. So that's where we're standing at the moment. So council has already got a strategy in place. So the, and everything that we're invested in at the moment, um, complies with that strategy. So we're now going to be looking ahead uh, for the next year in particular to the maturing bonds. So if I just read through, looking ahead, the interest rates are currently very low. And a lot of investment providers are no longer offering a one-year bond at this time to new investors, investors due to the unstable position. Uh, both of the current one-year bonds, which are due for redemption over the next few months, have offered a very attractive comparative yield over the last year, and both banks usually offer a good preferential rate to existing investors who decide, who decide to reinvest. Um, I have been told unofficially that although current investment rates etc. have not yet been issued, it is hoped that reinvestors will be offered a one-year bond option that is close to the rest of the market, although at a lower rate than the current um, investment returns, obviously. And then below, I'm just showing what United Trust Bank and Cambridge and County's are offering at the moment. Um, so which is open to the market. So hopefully, we'll come in above that. Um, but we're not going to, at the moment, should actually contact us. Um, and Cambridge and County's aren't offering a one-year bond to the open market at all. Um, so recommendations, bearing in mind the current situation, the CCLA Property Fund investment is fulfilling the investment strategy agreed last year and should be retained at the same level. Um, it should be noted that a ninety-day notice period to redeem the investment was introduced recently, which was reported to October finance. Um, the ninety-day period meant that on the day that CCLA received the redemption request. And then the sale will be processed on the first trading day after the ninety calendar days have passed. And they trade on the last day of each month. Um, the two fixed rate bonds are due to mature in December in January. And council should consider waiting for the reinvestment terms to be issued uh, before making the final decision. Uh, in addition, the position concerning RACIP uh, should hopefully be known, which may possibly bring some stability to market and improve potential yields. Um, I'll add to that as well, that with the vaccine coming in as well, that should, that may well have done a very positive uh, impact as well. Um.
Question, Rachel?
Sorry?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Can you hear me, all right?
Yeah.
How much have we gotten as United Trust Bank? Because I know it's, it's uh, it's not protected by the FCS.
None of our, none of our investments are protected because we're at the threshold.
Because what?
We're at the, we're at the threshold, which I think is.
Eight, five thousand, you mean?
No, 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 um, our spare labour is the next step, I can't remember.
Oh, definitely.
So it's because I'm very, very slow with my reading, we have a forty-five per year that.
Okay.
Un- unfortunately. But what I would say is, United Trust Bank, um, if you're doing research, and definitely Cambridge and County's Bank are very, very sort of strong banks. They're not able to catch, they're, they're very liquid. Um, which is, you know, is one of the reasons that we're with them in the third phase. Uh, so they are, they do offer better returns than the general bank. And they're offering more stability um, as well on the term. So, um, I was going to say, council could therefore consider reinvestment of the bonds when the terms are known. And this could be emailed to Chair or Council or Council's way until January and make a decision for both ones at that point, depending on the situation there.
When these, when these bonds expire, we could go on a, a virtual comparison site to see what offers there are really.
Yeah, but you, you can, but before a council. Yeah, but you, you can, but it's for a council, we can't go everywhere. So, um, that's, that's what I'm saying. Cambridge and, um, Counties Bank will not appear on a comparison site because it's not open to everyone. Um, it's actually, I can't remember, I can't remember whether it's from Cambridge University. They set this up, uh, and this fund is their pension fund. And it's very, very safe. It, it, they've got, they have to jump to, um, kids, uh, to be compliant with their safeguards and things. And, uh, they have to maintain a very, very strong, um, cash base. So we could go on to comparison sites, um, but we're not going to, uh, see everything. And generally, I mean, um, I wouldn't say that we'd just immediately, you know, sort of do reinvest when the investment terms come out. We would sort of have a look around, but we have got to take into account security as well. And historically, uh, these two providers have tended to offer one of the best returns for the overall investment that we can go into without going into high risk or equities.
We can't go into high risk. We're not allowed.
Well, we're, we're in CCLA, which is high risk, but you've just agreed a strategy where we're not going to.
Sharon, how many's happy?
I'd like to go with the office's recommendation, that's the main.
Okay.
I'd like to go with the recommendation, that's pretty significant.
Thank you, very much. Right, um, Ben has proposed and Roger has seconded that we go with the office's recommendation. Certainly thank you for a very full explanation, Rachel. Type of that in the vote, I see Terry's got a thumb up. We've got three hands up here. Like Tony, John, Bud, Franklin and Andy, everyone happy, Andy?
Oh, yeah. Very much.
So, uh, what, what I do, um, is that email Chair, which we discussed in January season. I mean, sometimes, um, kind of these, these close, so I would recommend that, um, you know, sort of, uh, if I possibly email around to Chair, um, to, to agree reinvestment as it comes up. But I would have, obviously have a look outside the market for whatever rate would be offered.
Could you give me hard copy please, Rachel?
I will print out.
My show is going to, you'll have on me. My mouth is still eating the cheese, I'm afraid. Right, uh, lease arrangement increases.
Another Rachel one.
Rachel? I think our money's got from you today.
Okay, it's this way. Um, it's the annual review of the, uh, four leases that we have. So we have the Bowls, Cricket and Scout. Um, they're fairly straightforward. Their leases have a built-in mechanism, uh, that is linked to the CPI figures, um, for August and September. Um, and this is actually specific in my leases. Um, but the, that the lower of the two are applied for the increase for the following year. So, uh, based August with naught point five percent, September naught point seven percent is there. So based upon these, the August CPI increase should be applied. And in the report, I've got the, um, I've shown Bowls, Cricket and Scout and the increase that would be applied. Um, we're not going to make big money, big money from this, but, um, that is a built-in mechanism that is part of the lease. Um, the, I have contacted, uh, all three parties and advised them, um, you know, they, they've all agreed because it is written into the lease. Um, the Bradley Stove Radio, um, are, are different. Um, they haven't got a built-in mechanism. And so I've had the full history of the lease charges that have been applied. And at the moment, uh, they pay eight hundred and fifty pounds a year, but they do pay for their electricity separately, um, and we installed a separate meter because, uh, they, they can, it can be quite high usage at times. Uh, but they have sent in, um, um, uh, what they, uh, uh, what they decided after an evening. Uh, so having discussed with the committee and taken into account the uncertain year ahead of the store, Bradley Stove Radio would like to renegotiate the lease that at a hundred and fifty pounds for the year, um, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-one, I think.
Did that be twenty-one, twenty-two?
That's what I'm about to say, I think that's next year. Uh, once our risk assessment, due to improvement work is complete, we also hope to be able to reopen our lease rooms to our community of presenters and volunteers with strict procedures and protocols in place. So basically, they want, they likely pose them for next year.
Lovely.
Would you?
Yeah, I was just going to comment on the, some of these costs. The Scouts have the highest charge of all year. Um, both the Bowls Club and the Cricket Club have got service letter agreements, which give them not Bowls, Cricket first.
The cricket has a use, yeah, Bradley Stove uses Cricket Club, Bowls don't have anything.
Right, okay. But, um, I was just commenting on the Bradley Stove Radio. I mean, they have a service letter agreement.
No, they apply for Community Development Grant Aid, which they're just about to apply for, for the next year. Um, I'm not sure whether they're applying for the three thousand, yeah.
Three thousand, yeah. And they also apply, uh, occasionally for grant funding as well. So the, you know, to pay eight fifty, then they get three thousand perhaps, and five hundred maybe grant funding, um, is a bit of a nonsense. I don't see why they're a special case, quite frankly.
They had previously offered to pay nine fifty, I mean, we froze it for them and then went to eight fifty.
I mean, that's what comes of having members of Bradley Stove Radio on the council, you know, obviously, you know, it's over.
See, my turn this first, I'm back.
Sorry. Tony, Rachel.
Um, whilst we're talking about the cricket lease review, um, I've spoken at length to an accountant who used to, um, who was a prolific, prolific cricketer, who, um, was the accountant for Bath Cricket Club for many, many years. And, um, a question which I asked at a previous meeting, if we could find out, what other authority pays a cricket club to cut their own wicket? Because he's never heard of it.
That, that was, um, I, I don't know, to be honest, I mean, that, that.
That was a question I raised at a previous meeting and nobody yet has come back. We pay a huge amount to the cricket club for cutting their own wicket. And I don't think there's another local authority, which the question I was asked, to find out whether there's another local authority.
Or, or like, I think Dell, I think Dell is, is looking into that, aren't you?
Sorry, come in, Dell.
Is that another job for Dell?
Yes. Dell, come in please.
Hang on, um, yeah, no, it's something I'm looking into. Um, it's something that doesn't need to come up because we have, uh, received from the person who's actually doing the work, um, they want to increase what they're doing by fifty percent. Um, so I'm actually desperately trying to get in quotations from various ground staff who can give a like-for-like quotation on the forty-three weeks times eighteen hours, uh, sorry, forty-three weeks times eighteen hours, um, contract that's currently, um, in place. So that, that is something that's definitely going to be looked at and scrutinized by, by the officers and brought back.
Yeah, my, my question is, why are we paying them to cut their own wicket? Because I've never heard of it before.
This is our wicket, it's our wicket that we.
It doesn't matter whether it's our ground or not, it's, it's a, it's a facility that we're paying them to cut their own wicket. And it's not generally done, as far as I'm aware, at any other cricket brand, whether they're local authority owned or not. My question was, can you tell me if there's another local authority which pays a cricket club to cut their own wicket? I don't think there is.
Rachel, do you want to come in?
I can't answer that one directly. Can I just keep the, keep behind it because, yeah, but this, this, um, this has, has come in sort of from several years ago. So originally, we had an external supplier doing the ground maintenance. And, uh, I think the cricket club weren't happy with the standard of the work on wickets as the, as the pleasure's improving. I know it's not going to answer your question, Tony, but, um, so it, I, I don't know all the ins and outs, but sort of quotes and everything were put forward to council and it was something that was approved by council for the, it's not going to answer your question, but it, it was something that was approved historically. But, you know, as Dell said, it's something that we are looking at because it, 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 it's not something that should necessarily be happening.
I don't know if it's relevant or not, but I noticed that immediately after the end of the season, there were a couple of members of the cricket club down there scarifying the entire playing area.
Yeah, they do what they maintain is worth and everything. I can, I will definitely ask the question of other local parish and town councils. And actually, I can put the question on the large council clerks group, which covers the whole of the country, to just see whether, what sort of, these offices I get back.
Good idea. Can we leave that with Sharon to action us?
I'll do that bit of it, so, yeah, and then obviously Dell and Rachel will do their bit of it.
Well, in the meantime, what about Bradley Stove Radio, you're going to leave with it? I mean, they want to renegotiate the lease. Does that mean they want it even less?
Not, no, not the lease, I think they're, they're just suffering to maintain it at a hundred and fifty pounds.
Eight hundred and fifty.
Sorry, eight hundred and fifty pounds. I think they've just put the wrong date in.
That's very generous, I would say.
Is everyone else happening, please?
Eh?
Is everyone, are all the other leases happening?
Yeah, you know, the, the Bowls Club has gone up twenty-nine pounds per year, the Cricket Club twenty-seven, and the Scouts twenty-nine.
Naught point five percent.
And they went up, so they went up by CPI, I think, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, point five.
So what is it that Bradley Stove Radio get, not still as a degree, you say it's?
They apply, each year, they apply for Community Development Grant Aid, so that would be coming to December, leisures and amenities. Um, for obviously the running of the, the station and also the other stuff that they do out in the community normally. Obviously, this year has been.
And then they come up with a few five hundred pounds per week?
No, I don't, I don't.
Okay, so, yeah, we remember what.
Not, not, what, the radio? I can't remember that one.
And that also has been part of community organizations, but one of the members of the organization.
I think that might potentially have been before we gave them the Community Development Grant Aid. I'm not sure on that one, yeah, but.
I'm just wondering, mate, it's like doing this every year, wouldn't it make more sense basically to put a CPI escator in the contract?
Yes.
And then keep it, keep it in five, and then just say that, well, we can increase it by naught point five percent. And then part of our renegotiation with them would be, let's look to put a CPI increase in the contract.
Well, I think that it is in the contract, isn't it?
No, not the, the.
You're for the, I'm sorry, I only, I mean, the radio, yeah.
That's what I wanted to done, sorry. For the radio, let's go by the, in my, what's happening with the other one. So, okay, we went by naught point five percent increase, four pounds fifty-five here.
Yeah. Better than nothing.
I mean, the question needs to be asked, I think, why should the Bradley Stove Radio be treated any different from the sports club?
Well, yeah, that's the principle, I do.
Can I, can I, it's a history.
Yeah.
So, but, but the Bowls, Cricket and Scouts, I mean, the, the Bowls and Cricket were already a picture when me and Eric were staying in school. Um, the, the radio was actually set up, um, a, a few years ago. I mean, the family probably sort of made it a bit different when it was set up. Um, and Bradley Stove Town Council gave them a dedicated space in Brookway. And the reason that, um, a certain mechanism for an increase was not, um, put against their leases, because in the early, in the early days, it was so low. They were hoping to increase it and nobody would know, um, you know, sort of how, how they would develop and get bigger. And if the mechanism had been put in place, you know, and, and, you know, sort of their turnover had increased substantially, it would be ridiculous just to apply a four pound twenty-five, um, increase, um, at naught point five percent. So that, that was why it was initially, um, in, uh, not put on and just looked at on an annual basis.
Yeah, but the situation's different, though, isn't it, between eight hundred and fifty and five thousand and eighty?
No, completely got the leases, yeah.
Huge difference.
There was a big difference as well between adding four pound fifty, whatever it is, to when they refused to offer nine, nine fifty, in previous years. Does it, does it kind of suggest, Rachel, that we probably should do more, like, analysis of what they're paying with them? Does it suggest that we should be doing a better, a better analysis of what they're paying?
Well, I suppose, I suppose you could ask the CDO before deciding on the lease about. I mean, historically, that, that's not happened because council has supported the radio as, uh, as an important part of, you know, sort of, the community. You know, but at the same time, this is completely down to council. And I suppose, yes, it does make sense for them to send in some financial, um, information on which to base any increase.
Andy?
They will have to submit their, um, financial, um,
Yeah.
information linked to their Community Development Grant Aid application in December.
Andy, do you want to come in?
No, I was just going to say, I've not been involved for a couple of years now, but the annual turnover and the rough cost of running the station when I was involved was about eight and a half thousand a year. Uh, the initial thought was that the station was going to be self-funded because advertising revenue was going to come in, but that didn't happen. Um, certainly, there were issues where Ofcom wouldn't allow certain forms of funding and advertising, things like that. So the station has never really been in a situation that it was going to make enough money to pay a, a, a reasonable rent. Uh, they only charge, whereas I think the, the Bowls and the Cricket charge reasonable memberships. Again, a lesson we can just change since I left, it was twenty pound a year per member, so there wasn't a great deal of subscriptions for membership coming in. It was tried to be run as low cost as it could, basically, whilst providing a service for the community.
Thank you for that. All right. Maybe you could say that to the others, or you could give the Bowls a little bit of stuff?
Well, you can, yeah, yeah.
Do we make these figures, uh, like Rachel, do you?
Well, you need to, you need to agree it, agree if you're happy with those increases and what you want to do for the radio increase.
So that's another question I have with the increases there, that I'd like to have, uh, more information about the radio, more information about their accounts, so we can.
If the accounts all are on, um, public house, because they're a limited company, not a proper limited company, all of your accounts are, are up there.
That's fine, so we can have, we can get all that together then for a future council meeting. Or I think, uh, if you personally, if you step too high, don't forget these are children that have to fund this.
Oh, parents.
They're not, they're not adults in the, in the, oh, right, yeah. The cricket club probably have to fund that at their pocket money, or in some cases.
I was thinking, pocket money, I didn't think, children have a pocket money nowadays?
So the problem is, somebody towards.
It's a mastercard, isn't it?
Do you not have a lot of pocket money here? Right, do we, uh, don't gather from Ben that we're proposing that we agree the figures for the Bowls, Cricket, Cub and Scouts?
No.
And we want to know more detail for the radio?
A lot more detail on the radio, but I don't agree with, I think it's Scouts and so too, no problem.
Can, can I just say, the, um, the, the brawl of we've sort of viewed to go these lease amounts and set by, again, set by council. What I would say is the difference between the Bowls and the Cricket is that the, um, and from the Scouts is that the Scouts run throughout the year. And, um, um, so that they've got, um, dedicated space, Monday to Friday, um, for term times and then Wednesday a week during school holidays, but it runs. Wednesday a week during school holidays, but it runs throughout the year. Whereas the Cricket and Bowls just run from April till October. So I was trying to think back to the full history when these sort of prices were actually set. And I think that's the reasoning behind it.
So what you're saying is in terms of money per week, it's not so unreasonable.
No, no, I just Scouts haven't queried it and it is heavily subsidized.
Well, they're resigned to it, aren't they? I mean, these are children, aren't they? Do we charge our youths to use the skate park? No, of course we don't. You don't charge them anything. So, you know, open space, exactly, or whatever. So why do we charge such large amounts on youths in uniform, which is it?
That was, that's a decision. So we we thought this was merely incumbent to.
Yeah, I would reduce that by.
Well, can I have a proposal then?
I propose that we reduce the scales.
To what figure, Roger?
Five thousand.
Five thousand? Does that have a second or anywhere?
Would then accept what I asked for.
Oh, no, Ben, Ben proposed accepting this as it is, as a top rate.
Oh, sorry, Ben, I beg your pardon. I I'm happy to second that, Ben, no one else is. So that's two things on the on the table, so to speak. Ben has proposed and I've seconded that we go with the figures on the top third of the sheet. Can I put that to the vote, please? Those in favour? That's Andy, Fab. I think that's it for those against? John?
Roger.
And Roger?
Two against.
And abstentions?
Tom's claiming the comments he wants to abstain.
I'm sorry?
Tom's abstaining.
Tom's abstaining. Terry's abstaining, I think. Hey, Terry?
Yes.
Yeah, Frank can abstain.
And myself, yeah.
I'm totally sorry, Tony, did you?
Abstaining.
Right, so that's four in favour, two against, and four abstentions. Sorry.
Well, that carries that one then. So we're now left with Bradley Stove Radio. Can we defer this and wait for more information?
Can I just, can I just ask Sharon, you said they're applying for grant aid in December with ten million pound account?
They, well, they, as part of applying for community development grant aid, they have to supply their most recent set of accounts. So yes, they will be.
Well, I'm I'm just wondering, Ben, I did leave the difference with the others, and they lodged that in December each year, did they?
Yeah, they applied last year and then they used the money during the year. It just so happens that that, yeah, it's just coming up to, they used all their money, I think, in like, that we'd given them in September, because obviously they report back to each leisure and amenities meeting of how they spent the funding that we've given them. So they will be applying in December for like, the next sort of funding, yeah.
Because it would make sense then for each year that they're pleased to be reviewed after they've applied for their funding and given their report at leisure year and amenities, and then taken to finance.
Would it, it would have to go to, because there's only like, two days between leisure years and finance. So perhaps it would need to go to, Bowls would need to go to January for council.
Or perhaps we need to have slightly different length of time between the two committees.
It would go to January for council.
Great question, that's it. Different answer, it was a question of.
I don't.
And they definitely applied for money this year.
They are going to be, yeah, because I sent the I sent them the application form. They know it needs to be back by the first of December, so yeah.
I I didn't, I thought that they got some funding from Covid. I didn't know if that was.
I don't know on that, so yeah. Well, I mean, you could defer a decision on Bradley Stove Radio lease until January for council, and then buy then accept.
That seems to make sense, doesn't it? Proposal is that we defer Bradley Stove Radio until the next, till the first council of the new year.
Second of one.
That's Roger and Ben. Anyone wish to vote in favour of that? Tony, do you want to come in? Or vote in favour?
Nothing says it.
Right. I think it's, everybody's in favour, I think. I'd also love Tom.
Is he still there?
I don't know, he's got a very nice picture of a pile.
Yes, that was standing in the in the lease review, but that's on my eight minute.
Well, it's him standing in front of the tree. I thought it was a sort of stepped leg.
Oh, sorry. So, sorry, can you just do that again, for in favour of deferring a decision on radio until January or until now?
Again, please, proper way, I think, yes, I think every hand is up.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, seven, not Sean, Tom, I'm.
No, I don't think Tom's there anymore.
Okay.
Are you there, Tom?
Yes, I am there.
No answer, there's a still reply.
Yes, I am there.
It's, as I wish to abstain from voting on the annual lease review agenda eight of the pub with three, so.
Yeah, that was the first one, I think. So we haven't, yeah.
It's leads to eight.
Yeah, it's now two, so.
Nice. First class is drunk? Got a four?
All right, you've got a written report and also copies of the five year forward plan. So a full mid year review of then at CBO finance, with quite a few budget changes made at that point. And the, so this is the first budget draft, so we'll be going through December and then January as the final agreement. And the report for the current year, so we've just, I've been out for a while and, you know, sort of not that speed with absolutely everything and just reallocating where where some things have been pretty difficult and the account is sort of changing it, things have switched lots a little bit. So, but I've itemised the report, budget, to be sort of changed for the current year, first of all. So after getting the the interest rate, funds, extra rate information on the current investment that we've just talked about, in June, we did actually scale back the budget substantially to five thousand seven hundred, because we thought the investments would be actually impacted a lot more. But based on the information that we have now, it makes sense to put it up to seven seven thousand. So restoring it closer to the level that it was through this year in June, when I think it was six thousand eight hundred. And then on the expenditure side, reports and publications, we no longer buy anything in case, so we're getting that budget. Computer hardware and all side, we had scaled that back initially to four hundred, but I have had to remove some of the purchases around within the account. So we need to restore that back to two thousand one hundred and fifty. But bearing in mind that equipment was bought for sort of homeworking and things along those lines, I don't think that's too bad at all. Street furniture, we had three thousand five hundred in, so it's just scaling it back to two thousand five hundred. And we have got sort of funds held in reserve. So that's that's for the current sort of budget. So I don't know, do you want to agree that now or discuss that and then we move on to next year's first budget draft?
I think we should go with the option one, which seems to be the only one that makes sense.
So that's that's later on. This is just the budget for for the current year and leave it in the board at the moment.
Okay. I'm happy to allow you that, Rachel.
Yeah, I just think it might be easier to do it nearby year.
And to us, this is the twenty.
This is the current year. Just a final, a final few changes linked to this year's being.
Thanks, that's proposed by Ben.
Seconded by Andy.
Thank you. Take a vote on that one, please.
Those in favour?
I.
Tom's up, Terry's up, Franklin's up, Frank is up. Andy's second, John is up, I think everybody's in is up.
Tony is.
Tony's finished. There's a world shortage of tumours. Right, please to carry on, Rachel.
Right, so then moving into next year, I thought the easiest thing to do, I mean, all of these budget changes have been incorporated within the forward plan and Roger will come on to the different options towards the end. So all these, I have incorporated all these budget changes within the forward plan already. And I thought the best way to show it was the the current budget, which is in the first column per twenty 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 one, and then the proposed budget for next year and the reasoning behind it. So the first one is the banking investment team, and as we discovered, we're expecting some dismal returns on our investment. So reducing that to five thousand within the forward plan. And then on the expenditure side, advertising and publishing, the current budget, two four two zero, but increasing it next year to three one fifty, because it was reduced this year because we could have, we could leave flyers for the community to attach on fireworks. So it's just reinstating the the budget again. And this is happening on quite briefly. Calms and safety, we did that that one this year, three seven fifty for Covid. At the time that I wrote this, I hadn't heard about all the vaccines coming through, so we might not need this budget. But increasing it to five thousand four hundred if it's required, obviously, budget, we don't just spend budgets because they're there. Computer support, we had eight and a half thousand then, and reducing it to eight thousand. And in fact, because we, where we are on the clouds now, we totally two of the servers that had quite heavily warranted against them. Street maintenance, sixteen two four oh, currently increasing it to eighteen two four oh. That's based upon the three year fixed price contract that was agreed in March, and also the introduction of the rampart enhancement. And I would like to add that complete maintenance of the due in the current year, when we were scaling back up all the budgets in in June. So I think originally it was narrowing money away. Professional fees.
That's been that one. Does roundabout enhancements include our little calf and dog?
No, it's only to main. And actually, there isn't, that that will, we will be relooking at that, that contract in the spring, because it's not, obviously, it's done for the year.
I miss them.
Do you want me to clap my bucket, then?
I know, it suits you best.
We've got.
Yes, I know we've got.
I will, I hopefully, they can soon make the reemergence a bit more securely on that roundabout.
Right.
Professional fees, this is the one where the contractor covering in my absence, will not be there, obviously, sort of in the next financial year. They're reducing that down to two thousand. Insurance, currently we're at fourteen thousand. That is scaled back a bit linked to actual expenditure. It's fifteen thousand because all of a sudden we're going to have an increase. And we're going to have possibly the new available pay area, which might increase our insurance values as well. Firework complaints, this will back up to the original budget, so rampart eight thousand one hundred, but again, it was slashed this year. And council agreed that the budget of three one four seven would be paid to the most charities need. So we had to reduce that to that, which was this year, together with the community festival. That's just requiring that back to, it's the original level that council had agreed into September, last September nineteen, going towards the event management to run that. That's additional costs, like the safety barriers and the private bits and pieces. The youth pub funding, I've listed, what I would say is the youth funding has stayed stable, sort of going, and is stable going through the five year forward plan. So that any increased expenditures at this stage, we would hope to try and get external funding to cover. So, but at the same time, now that the state park development and the shipping containers are in situ, and we're getting more contracts linked directly to the the state park, this was something that I was hoping to do before I was unfortunately out. So I've pieced together prices that we have that are sort of day to day and annual running costs. So far, it's not all of them by any means, probably, for the state park general running costs. And I've itemised all the different things that it covers, like the licenses, walking and electricity, emptying the bin at weekends, cleaning, you know, sort of the general sort of day to day running. And I've separated that out of the core funding. So the five five hundred and five six hundred, which is the new page that will be developed just for the state park, so that council can see the actual expenditures that that provision is costing. I've separated that out and basically I've I've just taken the current year's budget and the same budget that was already in the five year forward plan and just separated it up to between the state park and forward funding. The Jubilee Centre Electricity, I did this before, a report that's going to come later on in in the meeting. It was already in the forward plan, a ten percent increase across all the gas and electricity budgets for the three sites. General waste for the the Jubilee Centre has increased six hundred pounds. That's just based on sort of last year's year end figures. And hygiene waste just a five percent increase. Jubilee Centre fire and secure, security, we had slashed the, we had slashed the budget this year because the sites were closed. So basically, it's restoring it back up for next year. Also, it's general supplies. We had put a bit more in there, because at the time that this was formed, I was thinking Covid, you know, sort of, we're going to have that extra sort of hand wash, people are going to wash their hands more, probably use more sort of hand towels and this, that and the other. So we had increased the estimated full site supplies per month to three hundred and forty. If we don't need it, it's not sense.
Chair? Or acting chair?
Yes, please, Dave.
With the savings that we're making, or that would be possibly a small saving on getting our supplies now from a wholesaler as opposed to from the cleaning company, there's a little saving there as far as your surprises concerned. And the other, the other. There's a, there's a thought there which you mentioned, because a certain site is being closed, therefore we've made a saving. The actual youth hub. The actual, uh, youth hub, the skate park is closed. So I guess you're not really be needing cleaning there and things like that.
No, that was just, this was just for the fire and security, I mean, if the cleaning didn't go in, we wouldn't be.
You mentioned, you mentioned cleaning there of particular sites?
No, I was just going to do the Jubilee Centre at this point.
You mentioned, you did mention the.
Yeah, Jubilee Centre, um, well, we've talked about it in the earlier one.
You said something within the youth budget?
Oh, in the skate park, or running costs, yeah.
The running costs, and I'm saying this because it's closed, it's not open, which I find quite strangely that, you know, we, we still say that the skate park open under Rotherham rules and the new Covid rules, although people aren't so socially distancing on the site, because I've gone past many times, then they're not. I think, why is that, has not opened?
It will be, one, it's going to reopen after December the second, one day a week, that's what we planned to reopen. However, then the next lockdown coming and as I reported to you previously, the red tier that we're operating on at the moment is filled with most work as in by only, as well as girls' projects.
But I also mentioned before that, I mean, you've talked about forty to fifty people, I believe it was, using the skate park. And if that's at any one particular time, then they're not socially distancing. Because they're not anyway, because I've gone through it many times and they're not. And there's no marshalling of it or.
I had an email today, which I'm quite happy to dig up from the local police. I've been reviewing CCTV footage and visiting, and the police confirmed in our public charity service that they thought the skate park has been used really well during this period. In a positive way, yes, we, when we are there, we remind people that perhaps, that, I'll just hope, but it's all we can get, I think, is evidence in front of our eyes and the evidence in front of the eyes of the report from the police. Is that it's well-used at this moment in time and in terms of, well, security, it's for most of the time well-respected.
I'm sorry, Graham, you may have an email from the police. And if you can tell me how many times that they've gone past it and noted these things. And I tell you, I don't, I, Graham, the police fill us. I go past that skate park on a regular basis, if not once or maybe twice a day. And I'm telling you now, every time I've gone past it, the skateboarders are not socially distancing. That's my point.
What are you suggesting, David?
Well, it might be worthwhile, you know, with perhaps your, your input with the youth to perhaps have a little word man again. Engaged, as you call it.
Graham does regularly speak to young people and families and and advise and us.
How, with all due respect, when did you last go to the skate park?
I haven't been to skate park, I'm just passing on what Graham reports to me and he does review the CCTV up there. And he gives the responses of the police, so yes, I'm just, I, I'm not, I go out there regularly.
Have you not broken the data protection rules by monitoring the CCTV?
My understanding is no, because it's on, I'm, I'm now on the policy to review CCTV. We're in a Covid pandemic situation and all we're doing is fast-forwarding it to get a general picture of usage.
From a health and safety point of view.
From a healthy, safety perspective, to make it possible.
Okay, sorry, we're not supposed to be discussing skateboard parks at the moment, we're looking at the budget. And I'd rather be concentrating on that.
Let's move on. Let's move on in that case, my pleasure.
Rachel.
Well, we're, we're at the bottom of page three, I mean, the items on page four are certainly explained, if you can. Wary of the time that we're getting. So these are the major changes that have been fed into the five-year forward plan, so if anyone's got any questions or links to those that haven't already been asked, then otherwise, you can sort of consider them for approval. And then we'll be on to the five-year forward plan, and this is the first draft. So we will have, uh, sort of, um, discussions at December and January as far as we perceive.
Do we need to move on to the, um, four options at the top of page five now?
You need to pre-please.
You need to, yeah, don't.
I'm sorry.
To a pre-please budget that I highlighted, the larger one first.
So at the middle of page four.
Well, no, we've always the budgets from page two, page three, and then halfway down.
Yes, but the decision would be in the middle of page four.
Yeah.
Right. Can we do that one, please?
I think Tom said.
And Ben. Did John Gabb second it? I'm not sure.
I, I.
Think he did.
Yeah, Tom, so Tom proposed and John Ash seconded. You take both and not you.
Presenting, please. Tom, Fan, Andy. John, of course. Roger's abstained.
Six, seven, eight in favour.
And Roger abstained.
Tony. Andy, thank you. Yeah.
Hello, Harry.
Great, and now do we move on to the options on page five?
Yeah. Uh, well, um, it, it's just that it's then the tax base for those people that haven't, um, been involved with, uh, sort of the budget since before, must be understanding how we work. So the forward plan that you had got, uh, which is, um, the third budget draft, option one. Uh, the, the forward plan is currently based upon an indicative tax base. Now, it was published by South Plough in December nineteen. We provided a ten percent reduction, which council had requested sort of earlier in the year. Round about June time, so that's been applied. And a five percent reduction has been applied to their predictions going into the next five-year period. Now, these, uh, they are just predictions, they're not firm. But we've got to have something upon which to base up, initial after the budget draft. The actual figures won't be available until December, and I think, Karen, you said they were hoping to get them out early in December.
Yeah, that's what they said at the most recent Parish and Town Council Forum, they were aiming for. Beginning in December.
So, I mean, basically, um, that's going to be the number of households, bandy copies on which we will be able to place, uh, paper the preset levels that we set, so if those figures change drastically, it's going to impact quite severely in the, when we discuss discuss the budget in December, but in totally those figures, we, we've no idea, uh, you know, sort of whether a ten percent reduction is sufficient. As well as that, earlier in the year, we slashed the higher income. So we discussed it, um, October finances, uh, that I'd put forward, uh, different options linked to the higher charges. Because the, uh, the current levels are really, really low, um, you know, hopefully, in the cost. Uh, this is going to be the, the, that we're most impacted and losing that income from our site. So basically, we've got four options, so option one is, um, an estimate, uh, if we if we apply the higher charging funds that we would have used in our forward plan had we not reduced it this year first, if it's Covid. And that reduces over, uh, at the end of the year, thirteen point six thousand pound profit. But obviously doesn't allow for, um, any additional surplus year-end reserves, which I am expecting, but it's impossible to sort of calculate those at the moment. Option two is to maintain the existing power income that was introduced for this year. And that reduce, uh, that produces a sixty-seven thousand shortfall at the end of this year, and obviously, as things go over the five-year term, it, it accumulates an impact. Or option three, uh, to reduce by fifty percent. In which case there's just over fifty-three thousand pound loss at, at the end of, um, the, um, the year. Or option four, uh, reduce the budgets by twenty-five percent, uh, which produces, um, a year-end loss of nineteen nineteen point eight or nineteen point nine thousand. So, I mean, we don't know what's going to happen, I mean, i- i- in the period of time between me drawing these up all the vaccine, um, you know, sort of, um, opportunities have, have been reported, which could change things drastically. And we, we might well find that, um, um, first of April, you know, the vaccines have been out there and our, our sites can open, uh, you know, pretty much as normal. We, we just don't know what we're dealing with, so it's something for council to seriously consider on this first budget draft and maybe as more news comes out, we, we adjust it going forward. But you've got these four options in front of you, and I think, Roger, you're the same, option one.
Well, it's, the title of this is higher income, not higher losses. And the only one, first of all, is the next, the option one, but you're saying, um, it might affect the number of bookings because the fees are slightly higher. I don't agree, I think people either book it or not, depending on the Covid situation. And that's enjoying itself, so.
I'm not understanding, you're saying hi, this isn't, uh, increasing the higher charges, this is a, a higher budget.
Maintaining it.
Yeah, maintaining.
Yeah, maintaining it, but that's the only one gives us an income, isn't it?
But at the same time, council, um, there's a realistic prediction.
Yeah, I think that's difficult, isn't it, because, no, there are not many higher charges there, the motions for the higher income on our sites, yeah.
So an option that looks negative with like red figures there. So for instance, option four is a worse, a lesser worst-case scenario than some of those other options in two and three. But if you're assuming that the current situation doesn't improve, um, so you continue to buy this year, you end up at a negative of sixty, uh, sixty-seven thousand. That's not because we've reduced the income, that's because we're anticipating reduced income. So this is about that anticipation, option one wouldn't be a good option to select because that would be anticipating business as usual. Where we should be looking at one of those lesser options, which look more negative because then we're anticipating, actually, everybody was still inside a pandemic and we don't know what the first day was going to bring. So in some ways, option, I don't, I don't necessarily think option two's properly correct, it's all just wetting with the illness test, like.
It is, but for, I sort of see the public document and it just shows to the public that council had considered you know, the situation and at the same time, I post, I said, if, if, if all the sites open up, um, in the next quarter, then our expenses against those sites are going to be higher. But our income will be higher again. Um, if they don't open, then our expenditures should be less. In which case we'll have a higher year-end surplus. A, a, a surplus to fix with, so.
We haven't just got to accept, you know, once and for all, have we? And can't we sort of iterate as, as we delve along and have more, you know, actual situation? Can't we just?
How, how, how this works, so, um, this is the third draft and we go through the pre-draft, so December finance, we, we agreed with second draft. All the direct, you know, what they'd like changed. January, a budget has to be set. Because we then have to apply to South Yorkshire Council and tell them what the preset will be for our community, and that has to be lodged um, in, in, in January, generally early February, but I suspect with the way things are, they're going to want it in January so that it gives them time to recap.
Experience is always, we want it by the end of January.
So, I mean, that's first to get the preset, but, you know, um, the five-year forward plan, it is a projection, but this is just on the budget next year. But we have, what we have three chances to set it and, and that's it. Because once, once that's agreed, the preset will be set. Council can make changes to the budget after that time, but it won't change the preset that we've been getting for that, for next year. That has to be agreed in, at the January council meeting at the latest.
So I'm just setting my mind out there, so in my mind, we don't have any news at the moment, that currently projects that we'll be in a better position come next year, other than rumor mill about what's happening with various different news stories externally. So I would propose we stick with option two for now, what? And drafting that, we're going to make, we'll end up with this income on budget, so we're not aiming for the stars, we're trying to then rein ourselves in a bit.
You're happy to make a loss, aren't you?
No, no, I'm not happy to make a loss. I'm happy to say that I don't expect the income from those three activity centres to return to pre-Covid levels with option one. And that we should be assuming that we're going to maintain the current level of income from the sites based on current services.
Costs. Whether something's twenty pounds dearer is going to affect anyone's need to book something, I think.
Well, we might not even be open, we might not even, it, it's not.
It, it's not possible for our charge, it's exactly that, Terry, it's will our sites be open? Or will our sites be open and more than six and seven, or social distancing? Which stops the bookings coming in.
Andy, Andy and then Terry.
I think you're realistic, I think Ben's right, I think it's worst-case scenario, when I went second, option two. And on a note of going back to our standing orders, it's half past ten, if I remember right, you don't, we have to vote to extend?
Yeah, you do.
You did.
I could put, we extend.
Second.
To eleven o'clock?
Yeah, no later.
No later than eleven.
I suppose by like seventy, uh, so I was a hodger. That's to extend to eleven?
Yes.
Maximum.
Jerry, let's.
Yeah, sorry, can you just take a vote on that one?
Oh, sorry.
Harry, I'll just try and get everything done that we've got here.
Well, Tom's right.
Yeah, I think that's enough, thanks very much.
He's in San Francisco.
No, he's in San Brit.
Sorry, um, we've had a motion from Ben, seconded by Andy, that we go with option two. Uh, we've had a totally different view expressed by Roger. Um, but can I ask if everyone, anyone has any different views about going for one, three or four? Or shall I put option two to the merge? Or shall I put o- option two to the vote?
I think three, I think three would be better, don't you? Because it's more realistic.
Do we have to vote on this now, Rachel?
Rachel, do you want a decision on this now?
Yeah, just just with this first draft, that doesn't mean that's in.
Yeah, that's just give guidance.
Yeah.
So I'm not really used to vote on this first draft, is it?
Yes, it's.
Yeah.
Yes, give guidance, yeah.
Give guidance, yeah.
That's giving guidance.
Right.
So if you if you vote on option two now and then in December, things, the black things out there, things you can well.
Can I put option two to the vote then? A proposal from Ben, seconded by Andy, and those in favour, please, please to show. Uh I think um Tony and Phil and Franklin and Terry.
I.
Oh, this is the issue later.
Yes, yeah, six.
Okay.
That's six in the very top.
Okay.
And Tom. That's seven in favour. Against?
Roger.
Abstention.
Me.
And John, I think, yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'm going on my way to the trees in Bookway.
Tell them, tell.
Del, you're a tree lady.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not a tree lady. Um yeah, um residents have highlighted issues um that are of great concern at your Bookway site. These trees are within your area. Uh my professional opinion and my experience would be to sell all these trees. And you could, I don't know, you don't have a tree policy. However, I do think that if you do sell these trees, you might want to um to that other trees are planted um when these are removed. But there are considerable problems with these trees. They're on a footpath, they're overlooking um the football pitch, they're on the area that the scouts play. I know a lot of residents would be very upset with the removal of these trees because when I turned up, there was a lot of interest as to why I was looking at the trees. But I was trying to, from experience, point out to the local residents that if they were watching their dog and this little tree just decided to drop, it it would be a bit of a worry for me.
Are you saying this is a health and safety issue?
Yes, yes, I've run it past Vicky and she suggested because of the amount of money that is involved, we really should be looking at removing these trees. Um we have, for example, say, sorry, I've got so many trees to worry about. Um nine of them are just kind of like, I just need to refresh. The first one that is in the picture, it's a pretty cool picture. Uh it's overhanging a footpath. This tree is extremely high. If it actually falls down, there are probably three options of where it could fall down. One would be a footpath or there's two footpaths it could fall upon. One would be a football pitch and the other would be on the scouts. Um as in where they practise and perform their physical activities. Um there are five ash, uh sorry, ash trees, elm trees, sorry, within that parameter as well that are deceased. They're not a massively huge issue, but they do need to be removed because they could fall on somebody and hurt them. You have, and you have an ash tree, there is um a big litter tree that has had some work done to it, but it's had a stem removed and it has a priority and a top heavy area. And that's a real concern from experience and I've I've overstressing this. I don't want to sort of frighten the council, but I've had two trees that have fallen down on a on a public hot.
It's gone mute.
You've gone mute, Del.
I'm a mute, that's fine. Um I still that. Um I have been in a situation where I've had two quite large oak trees fall. They've had TPOs on them, these trees have uh trees, like TPOs, tree preservation orders. Um.
I'd just, because time is running out, Del. We go with your recommendation to fell and also with your recommendation with Ray's Garden Services being the cheapest. Who's the option we take up? I've got that.
Yeah, I've got that. Um have you put, actually put a points on uh tree surgery, it says here.
It's a health and safety aspect.
Have you spoken about these trees? Because I might, you know, trees might have a few years old with holes in it and they split there for another five years.
Okay, the positioning of the holes would inter, okay. I've come from an area where conservation, large trees, lots of trees, various trees. Um the particular tree that has a cavity in it, the cavity is actually in the base of the tree. It's um it's over fifty percent cavity, which is something that considering volume and the size of the tree would be a massive concern. I'm not a tree surgeon, I have a lot of profession. But from my experience, um I I appreciate the input that you're giving me, but this particular tree is a massive concern. This is the one that concerns me the way, it has decay at the bottom. Um and as you can see, there is um a picture of growth at the bottom. That means the tree is dead in the lower area. If it was higher up, I I this that wouldn't be a problem. But where this cavity is, it is a huge concern.
Sure. Sure. I've moved acceptance and going with the with the one, sorry, someone coming in?
Tom, yeah, I I just met them, you know, as officer already mentioned and in the interest of state health and safety. I think we need to move on and take the officer recommendation and do it.
Thank you, seconded my recommendation there.
Yeah.
Tom.
Yes.
The council's talking.
Thank you very much. I've put that to the vote.
And he says.
Sorry, Andy.
Just, no matter what Roger was saying about, would it not be worth having an arboriculturist just to come over and give us an expert opinion on these trees?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, these are, these are people who feel they are tree surgeons. Um and yes, we have had that report done. These trees, at the time that the report was done, they did highlight issues within the tree. There is a tree report survey that I have um that I've inherited. I haven't had time to look at it because these trees were highlighted to me for the noise, the creaking, the height of them, um and 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 yes, no. They have been looked at and they are of concern um to the report that you paid for. I think it was in two thousand and eighteen or two thousand and nineteen.
Had a tree survey.
I mean, if there is a health and safety uh aspect, is it not to prefer realistically?
Yeah, I agree with Andy. I think that, you know, would we, would it not be better to get an up to date report? Um because we've also got to think about the people who are complaining about um removal of the trees because there are, you know, it does sort of uh excite some people and I and we've got to be shown that we've done all of the necessary due diligence to make sure that, you know.
Yeah. Del.
And I just say, you have to have this report survey done. You have been absolutely meticulous. I have come from somewhere that's not had one done for thirty years and they've had bigger, worse trees than this. And and you have done these reports. They haven't been acted upon because actually at that time, the trees were not in this condition. These trees, for whatever reason, whether it's been something to do with the climate change, they suddenly develop these issues that residents have noticed. And from from, as an officer's recommendation with experience, I would recommend that you you get some of this work done. And I have suggested to senior officers that we look at in, or getting a tree management policy um in place that can help officers deal with these issues as they happen rather than complex.
That sounds a very good idea. I'm worried that the people who are going for today are going to be happy if it falls on someone and kills their little dog.
Or what?
Or them.
What can we vote for? Plenty of the. Or just for time.
Can I put it to the vote, please? Time is running out. I I have made a proposal and Tom has seconded it. So uh those in favour of following the officer's recommendation of moving ahead with the felling, please show.
One, two, three, four, five. Five in favour?
Against.
One, two, three.
And Terry.
Five against.
And Phil.
Yeah, that's five again, five in favour and five against. As Chair.
Well, I'm afraid I've got the casting vote and I think there's a health and safety aspect here and I think we've got to move ahead uh with the uh with the felling. Um I would make two provisos. I think we ought to uh ask the officers to look at what trees to replace them at there. And I also think we ought to ask the officers to um look at coming up with a policy uh on uh as suggested by Del. Is that agreed by everybody?
Yeah.
Andy, Tom. Andy, go on, Terry.
And and is that gonna come from uh which budget pays to your hat from?
Well, um.
I have funded seven oh one. Seven oh one. Which is, it's the building budget, which then leaves down some money for maintenance.
I'm happy with either of those two votes.
Yeah, none of those, seven oh one.
Thank you. Can we now look at Bailey's Court uh manhole covers? I've written them myself, so I have a great deal of sympathy with them. This one.
I think for the sake of um uh phrasing, I think we should call these inspection chambers. As opposed to.
Am I happy with that?
Oh, yeah, I guess manhole covers isn't politically correct.
No, it's from the person, person, hall covers.
Inspection, I mean, that.
Who gives.
A confection chamber will change that.
I had a name people I lived in on it called Sydney Chapman, who said in these days of political correctness, he's going to change his name to Sydney Person Person. Uh right, can we uh, sorry, wasting time. Can we move on to looking at these, this proposal? Um we've got the money in the maintenance budget and it looks as a recommendation should be that we go ahead and as the um Bristol Handyman, eighteen forty eight, plus that, uh it's not the cheapest, but it look, it'll be the best.
Actually, there's, there's two to make, isn't it? It's that.
I think for you, James, maybe.
We're planning two different quotes.
I don't know, sorry.
Yeah, a very clear, comprehensive specification. Um as much as I'm a certain way, I'm quite specific with my specifications and they have come back with two quotes that are quite misleading. Um which worries me because obviously if you say to somebody, I'm going to cut some trees on an area, I want to know how many trees someone's cutting because they could cut more than two trees and we've agreed to a certain amount of money. So um I don't know any of these companies, I've not used them before. I've gone with um local staff who suggested these people have done work for the council store. And uh obviously the quotes are there, so I'm just sort of suggesting that this work does need to be done. Um as you can see, the the area is quite raised, the block paving or, sorry, the patio slabs are quite wonky.
Yeah, let's go with the edge.
The chair. Yes, sorry, can I go in?
Yeah, because, yeah. Of what do you want this to uh, because the other one's saying that they've removed the beach and it involves a bit of chicken. So are, is it compatible, are they free to farm eggs?
Sorry, sorry, Tom, but Mike, hang on, let me turn the volume up. I don't know.
Correct, maybe my problem.
That's good, it's a little, go on, sorry.
Is the Tom Harris and P A James uh both, if I don't recall, their course.
Right, what are you proposing, Tom?
Because the other one, they're saying they will remove the waves and they will. Uh will P A James really want to do that?
Is that back again?
Which one are you proposing, Tom?
P A James, I think.
If we're P A. Those in favour?
I've got the phone, just like that.
Do you need a second there?
Um yeah, Tom, just seconded.
I think, I think Andy wants to speak.
Yeah.
Ben, give a vote to you, sorry.
But I'd like to just say, looking at the Tom Harris quote, he actually is looking to do a proper job where he's going to remove the manhole and reduce the actual level to make it fit all properly. Whereas P A James is just looking to replace the uneven slabs. So you're probably gonna end up with exactly the same situation further down the line of P A James. Whereas if you look at Tom Harris, not only are they removing the slabs, et cetera, but they're proposing to lower the manhole to the suitable level so that it's not gonna happen again in the future.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
That is a question I asked, that was a question I asked, though.
You've admitted it.
Sorry, Tommy, there's 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 feedback, I don't know if Rachel will say even. Everyone's very different to you, it's not you, it's very, very quiet, but.
We're having problems with the video camera here, it's just suddenly decided to stop working. I think three hours is probably it.
So do I, hang on a bit. I'm joking.
That's right.
Get that all checked out. Um but from my perspective, I like to be transparent and I do look at Tom Harris and I think it's a fact that he specifies, my specification, when I put out for a a job to be done, is quite clear. So I give them a specification and I like to investigate my interpretation. And for the councils inside on their specification, it's quite important because it needs to be clear and transparent when they're spending that money to get that work carried out in accordance to how you want it completed.
Yeah, that's a pretty.
What was your recommendation, Del?
My recommendation, according to the specification that I've given out and received back would be Tom Harris. I don't know this um company, but the fact they're removing this particular area, they specified the area of unsafe uh unsafe for around the manhole, sorry, excuse the pardon, the visual inspection area. Um to remove the glass, to lower that area to the suitable level, because my brain can't work it out in comparison. And then supply all the materials required and remove the waste. So even though they are a little bit more than the other ones, the fact that they specify clearly what they're going to do means that you will be making good decisions, looking at that quotation. And if they don't, then in writing, I have that to then pull them up and say, you've not carried out the work after your specification.
Okay, that's a good thing. Uh that's.
I'd have proposed that we use this guy Harris.
Yeah, I think that's right.
But.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
So that was, so that was Tony and who seconded it.
I did.
So if you take a look at that.
Those in favour, please, of going with Tom Harris? Your name was on the run.
You must, I think, on there, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we have eleven minutes. Uh telephone and broadband, good. In conversation?
No, this is um Rachel.
Rachel?
Um right, we, our telephone um line and broadband uh is due to be formed third of December. Uh we had new phones in two thousand and eighteen. Uh so we're tied into um uh maintenance contract uh seventy five uh quarter uh that runs to the thirtieth of April two thousand and twenty three. And if we leave that now to go with someone else, there'll be a seven hundred and fifty pound exit charge. That's just to uh give some background. At the time when this was set up, um council was um thinking ahead um and knowing that, like the old telephone lines, the ISDN lines, the digital lines that we currently use, uh was going to be phased out over three years. So um the plan was that council would be look to uh go on to phones using the cloud. Um so basically, just uh sort of whizzing through this, uh there were a couple of options. Uh so uh we're our visiting um uh phone supervisor, um. So for our existing phone provider to provide quotes, if we remain with our existing old-style telephone lines and at the bottom page one, you can see there's hand rates, a two-year contract, three-year contract or five-year contract and an out-of-contract rate. So if council did decide to sort of say with that existing sort of phone line, it, it would make sense to do it for the three-year period. That would tally with our maintenance contract on the phones and it wouldn't be a large uplift on our current, our phone contract. But at the same time, option two is to upgrade to cloud phones on the cloud. So we had quoting from mainstream who are our existing supplier. And for that, it would be a one-off charge, eight hundred and seventy-seven pounds and then a quarterly charge of five hundred and forty-six pounds eighty-two. We asked Diana who provided all. Tony.
Michael, is he turning?
Sorry, I'm looking in back, so who's coming in?
Tony.
Tony.
Are we talking about landline phones here?
Well, on the first page, it's land. Yeah, this is sort of the, the office inside phones. So back in 2018, this was, this was council's plan and I've attached the, the minutes from when it was, was agreed. So it was, once the current contract ends, we'll be in a good position to switch from standard phone lines to the cloud, which will make us considerable savings each month on lines and calls. In 2025, phone lines will no longer be supported.
What, what's the advantage of having a cloud phone?
I, I think it, I think it costs a little bit. And, and, and the, the old-style landline are not going to be supported in the future according to all the information that's been provided. And that was known back in 2018. So this is merely carrying out, where our contract's coming to an end, carrying out the issues that council put in place back in 2018.
We, we put these in place from the recommendations of what comes out from the officers. So don't keep blaming it on, it's the council that has done this. And my, my, my question is, what, why, why do we need to go to a cloud phone or a cloud system?
To save money.
Sorry, it's to.
For a, for a predicted money saving. Predicted money saving, longer term. So at the bottom, you can, so it's like we, we carry on with the current position. I mean, we have a box which for the cloud, there are options there. Or.
Just to find out what, what, what the advantages are to go to, to a cloud system. If it's, it will save money on it, then, then I think we should be looking at it, absolutely.
If you have a look at the recommendations at the bottom, at, at price at the end, I think that's MRI up at there. And we can continue with the current position, which is in the region of six hundred and fifty-nine pounds sixty-fourth. Or we could upgrade to sort of cloud phones. So we have an upfront cost of eight hundred and seventy-seven pounds. But then there's an estimated saving of seven hundred and eight pounds twenty-eight quarter, which equates to nine hundred and thirty-nine pounds sixty for the three-year period. So it's, in the long run, it's cheaper and it, it all comes down to whether the, the old existing phone lines are going to remain supported.
As we only have four minutes left before we have to close, do I take it that your recommendation is that we go with option two A? Rachel?
I, I, it's either. I mean, we, we had a look at the cloud because that, that's what was in the minutes previously. It's the cheap, all the information provided at the moment is the cheaper option.
Ben has whispered in my ear that he is proposing option two A and that I'm happy to second that. Those in favour, please?
Option two A?
Yes.
Two A at the top there.
Yes, two A at the top.
Yeah, option two A.
So the one-off charge and then then the swap.
Recommendation of A, upgrade, which is option two A.
Yeah.
So as detailed in Recommendation B.
Yeah.
Option two A, Recommendation B.
Yeah.
And that was proposed by Ben and seconded it.
No, it's Recommendation A, isn't it mainstream?
Yeah, it's two A at the top, so it's the Recommendation B at the bottom.
Oh, yes, sorry, yes, right. Those in favour, please? Screen in the room, Andy, Fab, John trying to hide his space, Frank. Tom, you have any votes?
Nine, yes, Tom, he's got to say that.
Oh, yeah.
That's nine in favour?
Yes.
Tony, what did you vote for?
I voted for.
Oh, sorry, so that's your number, so.
Right.
The two that we, we need to do are, are the, as you were coming up to do. And there's obviously the payment schedule because that's fine and sensitive. And also to the meeting dates for 2021.
I thought you, yeah. Because we can move on to time.
Anyone else any queries on the monthly expenditure schedule?
No.
Tom's opposed, Roger's seconded, so we agree that.
Can you take a vote on that, you have a bit of payment schedule, please?
Right. And.
Oh, yes, yeah, that's your numbers, thank you very much.
And I'm quite happy to propose the council meeting dates for next year. I think that. Thank you very much.
All those in favour?
All those in favour? Fab is voting twice.
Yeah, thank you. Right, so I don't know about the, the gas and electricity review, whether that, because that's fine. I don't find, and it's a real shame because we got some quotes that have been, that are being held till Monday, but they can't be held half that day. So basically, I mean, long story short, our existing gas and electricity contracts are due to end at the end of October next year. But all the indications at the moment across the board from all the utility brokers and everything outside the market is that the prices are going to hike massively because the companies have lost so much money for, for two main reasons, from COVID. So they're going to pull their money back. So what brokers are doing for sort of larger users like ourselves is to secure contracts for, at prices now where they're beneficial, that will kick in in November, when our, November next year, when our current contract ends. So that's what I was doing.
I think that's a fine sensitive one as well.
Well, we've got two minutes to say that, Tom.
You've got one minute by the timer on there.
Well, let's go by that side.
Have we just been to jet here? That is your opinion that they have said, yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna hike? It's absolutely not necessarily. All, all gas, electric, oil, etcetera, is all done by supply and demand. That's how the prices go up. No other reason.
Well, we put this, I put this in various sources. What they're actually saying is that, because they, the gas and electric was born in the sun and because those provisions were in the UK, they had to sell it back at a loss. On top of that, so yes, I agree, basically the gas and electricity is, might well be lower, who knows? But the suppliers are, are going to, they're going to add their resping on to all that philosophy machine.
I think we have, you need to, but you can't.
I was just indecisive now, I think we have to.
So then I, I'm proposing to close the meeting and leave the outstanding items to be referred to next meeting, Tom?
Well, yeah, like the, the gas and electricity can go to finance and the policies.
Could we just do that, the general act, I would vote on this, which you type. Anyway, item five, which was missed, just skip to general.
Did you want to say something?
Item five, what was missed?
Yeah, announcements from the chair. Did you want to defer that to the next meeting?
You were not here at the time, Tony, and I didn't say there were no announcements.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I wasn't here at the time, hence there was no announcements, but I am here, right? And, and so what, what my question was, do you want to defer that to the next meeting?
Yes.
Or, or do you want to create an announcement?
For to the next meeting?
By your, you cannot, the port, you know.
Before the meeting closes.
Because I didn't say it certainly, there was no announcements from the chair because I wasn't here.
Tony, you start a lot of it, you know, you're good.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Sharon. Can I thank officers who have sat through this? Dal, Rachel.
You've got to family town.
And resume real life.
They've been tested, I think, they've, they've been out searched by.
Well, I'm sure my wife will be.
Do I need to copy those for general? Probably not, because they're going to be spared.
I'm, I'm just sorting out.